I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you all for being here. I don't know that the county has certified the election yet, but it appears that our two incumbents were reelected. So congratulations to Joe and Ray for being elected for another four years of this fun. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, December 11th, 9:00 a.m., right here in the community center. And if you've not already done so, please silence or turn off your cell phones. One other thing before we get into item four, without objection, I would suggest we move 5E, the discussion on the operations, to the end of the meeting rather than -- so we can get through all of the other stuff, because I think the discussion of the golf courses is going to be a long one. So if we move it down to either after 14 or 15 on the agenda. Does that make sense to everybody, or you want to just plow through it?
It's not me.
I don't care.
Okay. We'll move that to the end so that we can get through the reports and whatnot before we get into the longer discussion. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I had one point on page five where we were talking about the meetings and the report says, "President Hotelling thought it might be a good idea to have the acting president of the board at the time make a statement to the public." What I said there was like a state of the district report, kind of like a State of the Union report. So I just wanted to clarify that, because a statement could be kind of strange. Okay. Anything else from here? Anything from the public? Call the question?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes.
The next item, 5A, is Resolution Number 2020-1113-37, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District adopting the schedule of regular meetings of the Board of Supervisors for 2021.
Move to approve.
Motion. Is there a second?
So be it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board?
May I?
Any from the -- oh, yeah.
If we, if we're successful with those early in the year with the six o'clock meetings, I'd just like us to be open to changing more in the fall to six o'clock as well.
I would agree, and I think we discussed that in the minutes of the last meeting.
No problem.
So we'll be flexible on that.
Okay.
We want to encourage participation. Any public comment?
By the way, the sound is terrible over here. The earphones aren't working, so I'm static. Good morning, everybody. How are you? My name is Bill Norcross. In the first resolution you're talking about --
The scheduled meetings.
Yeah. They had discussed earlier about having night meetings.
Correct.
We don't want one every month, obviously, but maybe once every other month or something like that to involve more people in the community here. All right? We really appreciate that under consideration. Night meetings earlier, maybe four o'clock, five o'clock, something like that, you know. So thank you very much for any consideration.
Okay. Any other public comment? Anything else from the board? Kristi, call the question?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes.
The next item is 5B, Resolution Number 2020-111338, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve the updated local mitigation strategy for the district as adopted by Highlands County. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board?
I just had a question. What changed from the last time? Didn't we sign this already, Mike?
We did this four years ago, yes. So since -- it is a requirement every five years, but since FEMA approved and updated local mitigation strategy of working document, they have required all the municipalities and special districts just to reapprove as part of this group. So all this is, is basically we're just -- we're going through the motions for FEMA to go ahead and approve to be part of this group moving forward in case of any emergencies. You're welcome.
Okay. I did also note that there is a requirement, if we want to have a voice on the organization, that we need to assign a voting member and an alternate voting member. Do we have one now?
Currently Omar and I. Omar is the voting member, and I'm the alternate. So if he cannot make it to the meeting, then I will participate. So that's -- I would recommend the same on that as well.
Okay. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. Kristi, call the question?
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes.
The next item is C, Resolution Number 2020-111339, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve budget amendments 2020-6 and 2021-1. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Perhaps -- I don't see Omar, but I wonder if we could have some discussion from staff on what we're doing here.
Yes. I apologize. Omar is not here right now. So yes, if you want to open up to questions. I can go ahead and explain the two budget amendments first if you want me to, and then we can --
Well, I have a numbers question.
Can you use the microphone, Ray? They can't hear at all.
I have a numbers question.
Okay.
The report that Omar sent out on 9/30 showing -- not 9/30, I'm sorry, on, I guess somewhere at the end of June showing the open capital projects that we still had listed, the lift station grinders as being outstanding for $105,000, and now you're requesting to move $130,000.
I'll have to check on that. I don't know that as far as the number difference. We may have had some cost estimate increases on that project, but I don't know. I'd have to take a look at the June report that you're looking at versus the budget amendment. So there's about a $25,000 difference.
Yeah, it says lift station pump grinders, GL accounted for me, but it says $105,000.
We did have that discussion at a later meeting. I can't tell you exactly which meeting, but I remember when it came up, because the $105,000 was based on an estimate and that there were costs that we hadn't calculated in, but I don't remember exactly which meeting.
The cost increase, I just don't know what part of the project would have increased. So Omar is recommending to go ahead and move forward with $131,000 carryover to cover the cost on the project.
I mean, we wondered, he's going to bring about $105,000.
Well, I'm not concerned about it, because I remember we talked about it when we raised the budget item for it.
So Budget Amendment 2021-1 is a standard budget amendment that we do every November to carry forward our projects that are not completed by September 30th. So of course, one of those is the lift station grinders that we mentioned. The second one is the shade structure at the racket club that has also now been installed. So if you haven't been over to the racket club, the shade structure is installed now. And the drainage maintenance, there is a few open items that Excavation Point did not finish by year end, so $29,500 covers those costs. So that's the basics for Budget Amendment 2021-1. Any questions on that one?
Well, if you can give me an answer on that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. I'll get back to you on that one, and what the cost, why the increase in the cost on that project.
Any other board?
Okay. I was going to say Budget Amendment 2020-6 is the final budget amendment for September 30th. And again, this is a standard budget amendment that we do every year to realign our original budget to what we actually did for the year. So for instance, in the utility fund, we underestimated revenues for water sewer connection fees. And based on the new connections and construction, we brought in almost over $200,000 more than we originally estimated. So what we've done here is we've realigned the budget to what we've actually brought in for the year as for revenue. We've also done that, realigned some costs within the general fund. And so that's basically what the 2020-6 budget amendment does for us.
Okay. Any further board comment? Any public comment?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Kristi, call the question?
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes.
The next item D is a discussion item, Board Member and Resident Appointment for Assessment Appeal Committee. Can you brief us on that, please, Tanya?
Yes. Each year, we form a committee to receive any appeals from the community as far as what their assessment, you know, what their assessments would be for the year. So by November 30th, if there are any appeals from the community, we ask that we receive those, and there is paperwork that the residents can fill out. And the committee each year will meet in December, and we appoint a board member and a resident to review any appeals and to -- it's open to the public. So this meeting, they would review the information and then make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. I believe it would need to be at the December 11th meeting. So we would need to meet the first week of December for the Assessment Appeal Committee, and then bring any recommendations to the board on December 11th. So we're looking for a volunteer supervisor. I have received confirmation from Dr. Wally Edgell. He would participate for this committee as the resident of Sun and Lake.
Is there a board member that would like to volunteer for that? I think Mr. Brooks did it last year. Had so much fun.
Yeah, I did great, done a great job, so we should.
Yeah, but I'm not concerned yet.
Yeah.
I won't be involved.
Okay. Anybody else want to volunteer for that job?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Mr. Harret. Okay. Everybody okay with those decisions, Mr. Edgell and Mr. Harret?
Well, it's --
Is there consent from the board that those are the two representatives we'll have on the appeal?
Yeah.
I'm seeing the thumbs up. Okay.
So as soon as we have that meeting scheduled, we'll let you know. It'll probably be that first week of December. It lasts probably about an hour.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Postponing 5E till the end, we go on to item six, add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
Where is the staff?
Good morning, supervisors. Got a few things to update you on this morning. I'll start off with the golf course. The washout on the right side of 16 on Turtle Run has been completed. We've added Coquina to the parking area right of number one Turtle. That adds a little bit of extra room for when we're running tee times out there for people to park and navigate through there. Our pine straw shipment finally was delivered this week. I don't know if you were out on Turtle Run yesterday, but you can see where they've started to put that out on the golf course to kind of clean up some areas. That project will take some time, but it'll be completed here within the next couple of weeks.
What did you call it? I missed.
Pine straw?
Oh, all right.
Yep. So, well, you can see right, if you went out to Turtle right now, behind number one Turtle, between and between nine green, that area's already been, I believe it was completed yesterday. So that'll happen in several areas that are out there. Coming into overseeding time, so both courses have been prepared with pre-emergent in the areas that will not be overseeded. Basically, what that does is that allows when the seed goes down that we get clean edges from non- overseeded areas to overseeded areas. Plus, you know, when carts are out there and foot traffic, we don't track the seed to areas we don't want the seed to germinate. Either way, it gives a nice clean look, and you don't have overseed grown where you don't want it to.
Mike, good question. On the overseeding, are we still planning on doing the driving rain?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing. So obviously, we could tell we got a lot of rain in the last couple of weeks. We see, we saw an increase of disease pressure, particularly on the greens on deer, the champion Bermuda grass. They've been sprayed with the appropriate fungicide applications. That, if we get a little bit of sunshine and a little drier weather, that should be cleaned up with no issues. With that being said, any questions on the golf course? All right, I'll move on to membership. A few things to update. First off, you know, I spoke with the 50% off membership last meeting. So currently, we have had 27 of those memberships expire. 15 are currently rejoined. That's about 55%. And a couple of those just expired here in the last few days, so there could still be opportunity for them to rejoin if they have not returned or anything like that. So it's running at about 55%, which is down from 75, I believe, last time. I believe our projection was about 30%, 30% to 35%. So still looking to be running ahead of prediction. The new international membership, we have had one person take that so far. I project there will be several here in the next two months, probably closer to January, we'll probably see that start to really take off. So with that being said, currently, as of yesterday, we have 302 total memberships. Last year, for the entire year, we had 414. So we're at 73% of memberships compared to our total memberships for the entire year last year. On a year-to-date number, we have taken in $818,000 year-to-date for a membership this year. Last year at this time, we had $955,000. So we're at about 86% of last year's pace, if you will. And we did project a downturn in that in our budget. Not quite that much, but I'm still positive that we will get fairly close to our budgeted on that. We may not quite make it, but we'll be, I think we'll be fairly close. We're right around 80% of our total right now. Just speaking on some upcoming things, we have Thanksgiving coming up in two weeks. We currently have 234 dine-in reservations, and we have 20-plus takeout reservations.
On your advertising, what's the $20 plus plus or $19 plus plus?
The plus plus itself. So that means plus tax and plus gratuity. That means it's not included in that price.
We ought to have a little note there someplace on that. If you're going to put the pluses there, what does that stand for?
In the future?
Yeah.
Because all I could think of was, well, it's going to be around 20 bucks, and then we're going to do some add-ons for this and add-on for that. Tax and gratuity makes sense.
And it's pretty standard in the industry, but I don't disagree, because there are a lot of people not in the industry that need to know.
Mike, could you get us a copy of the membership? What you got so far? I mean, one of these days, I have no issues with that as long as, I mean, is that --
Did you want the detail for each member, or did you just want the category? How many members per category?
Who signed up and who hasn't?
So you want names?
With the names, yeah.
With names?
I'm okay with that. You've done it in the past, so I don't think it's anything extraordinary, but.
I don't see it being an issue myself, so.
Is there any reason we don't publish a membership list? I would think members would like to have a list of all the members.
Oh, we do. Every year, we have a member. We post it online.
We do a directory, yeah.
And you do a paper directory as well. But you're looking for those that did not sign up.
Andy last year gave it to me two or three times as we went through till January.
Okay. Yeah, no problem.
So I knew it wasn't a problem, or at least it shouldn't be.
No, not at all.
Okay. Going back to the Thanksgiving. So that 234 dine-in reservations, we, that's close to 50% of what we did last year. Now, we're still two weeks out, so I, usually, that 230 is probably about where we're normally at, two weeks out. You know, usually the last two weeks is when people are starting to make their plans and reservations. So I expect that number to grow. So I feel fairly positive about that. I know we're not going to do the 450-plus, because we're creating extra space for people to feel comfortable in there. It's not going to be quite as tight as it normally is. So my goal is probably in the 300 range and to feel comfortable with social distancing and all those.
It's a buffet. Are you staggering the seedings?
Yeah, we always do. We always do stagger our seedings. That way the buffet lines don't get long. It's going to be a little bit different this year. It's not, you know, the price, we reduce the price. The reason why is because we actually reduce the size of the buffets slightly to accommodate having a buffet. Now, we purchase sneeze guards now, and we will not, the patrons will not be handling any of the serving areas. So that will be done by staff, obviously, with the proper PPEs to do that. That way, it's not, there's not an exchange from person to person touching spoons and things like that. So it'll be, it'll look different, it'll feel different, it'll still be great. And I'm really positive that we've had the turnout that we had so far.
You are going to be able to satisfy social distancing?
We are 100% going to satisfy social distancing.
Okay. Are you seeing an increase to the carryout as opposed to fit in for people who aren't comfortable?
We've allowed some takeouts in the past. Obviously, it's a different world today. The takeout numbers, I'm surprised it's as low as it is. And maybe it could be the same situation where two weeks out, people are still making their plans. I don't really have a judgment on that right yet. That number could have gone up yesterday. So I really don't have a take on that quite yet, but it will be higher than in the past for sure.
Are we doing any regular takeout business anymore?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we always have done takeout, and that business, we still do a lot. There's a lot of people that phone in and come and get their items to go, especially lunch. We get a lot of the local businesses right on Sun and Lake Boulevard and the hospital and all those folks, they order to go lunches all the time, and they always have.
Is it anymore?
I'm sorry?
Are we advertising it anymore?
Yeah, we actually, so we actually visited, and I have a whole list. We actually, two months ago, we actually knocked on their door and visited all the businesses up and down Sun and Lake Boulevard, gave them our new menu, let them know everything that we're doing. So we just basically, that was just a door-to-door thing to say, hey, come see us.
What I meant was, I used, I remember getting emails all the time saying, we do takeouts. I not only remember seeing them recently.
We haven't done a specific, other than this Thanksgiving meal, we haven't done a specific takeout menu where we were doing the $9.99 menu before. We did discontinue that $9.99 takeout menu. Basically, maybe we can do that a little bit better, but you can take out anything on the menu you want. So we can just advertise that a little better.
I'm not trying to talk you into a $9.99. What I'm trying to suggest to you is, with the COVID situation being what it is, at least for the next 60 days, I don't see people running out to come into our restaurant. And I would perhaps try and reinforce the fact that they can take anything out off the menu, if that's what the case is, and get that in front of them.
Yeah, I like that. Anything else on that? I do have kind of two things I'll need the board's input on. We had a member who joined his membership, and he joined a full, single membership. And then a week later, he found out that he was going to have to have, looks like back surgery coming up, I think in January or February. And he made a request to reduce his membership from a full membership to a three-month membership for this year. And that is something by policy I cannot grant. In this situation, I am okay with doing this. I just need board approval to take him from a full membership to a three-month membership after he's already paid for the year. Now, the other option that we would normally do is if something like that happened in the middle of a membership, we would basically give him a leave of, a medical leave of absence and give him a credit for next year. But this is, I mean, he's two weeks into his membership, and he did not forecast that to happen. So I don't know if the board has any input or if they will allow us to reduce his membership and give him a credit. Yeah.
He's a neighbor.
Yeah.
And he's been a member for how many years?
I don't have that information, but he's been around for a while, yeah.
A long time.
Yeah.
I personally would support it.
Are you talking about him going to a two-and-a-half-month one and then giving credit next year for the, is that the way you're going to do this? Or, because you said he played for two weeks?
Yeah, he just joined late October.
I wouldn't be against it.
So there's two ways. Either A, we can just issue, we can give him a refund for the difference, or, which we can do. Or we can issue him a credit for next year. I'm open to either one. I think he would prefer a refund.
Okay.
He would prefer a refund.
Have we done that, Tanya? I know we've given credit, but I don't know about, I mean, and I don't care either way, but I just, I can't.
A couple of years ago, we did that for two people. One for a death of the family, and one because the member's wife had health problems and had to move.
I think we give him a credit. I'm not going to argue about how you want to do it, but.
We allowed them after they had paid to go back there and adjust their memberships and pay accordingly.
Yes, we can do it. I just need your approval too.
I could give you names, but it's irrelevant.
The guy had the right intention. He did the membership thinking he could play. He went out, he tried to play, because I was on the course room, and people near him when he played. He couldn't play. He had stopped. He got to like five holes. Then he goes and he finds out he needs back surgery. I mean, it's an unusual circumstance.
Yeah, it's unusual. It's a slightly dangerous precedent, but I think it's a unique situation. I don't anticipate it's going to happen very often. So I think I'd support giving him a refund for the difference.
I've known that for years. If he can play golf next year, he will join us if he can. And I don't have a problem doing, but if we, if we just have given credit in the past, do we really want to alter from that? I mean, it sounds like that's what you've been doing, is providing a credit.
We've done that for medical leave of absence. That is the process for that. This is a different scenario as it is a change in membership.
I mean, this guy hasn't been able to play golf. He's having back surgery. He's having back surgery.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
I just really don't care and don't think we should, you know, but it just, we got to set a precedent and not be, so if we do this, just make sure you make a note that for this certain kind of a deal, we can give them their money back.
Yeah, I don't know that I want to call this a precedent. I want to call this an exception.
Well, we have to make a record of our exception.
Yes, I think we can make a record that we made an exception in this case, but I don't think we want to call this a precedent that we're going to do it for everyone that comes along. This was so unique that it's a brand-new renewal, and he just discovered the problem, and he's been a longtime faithful member.
Okay.
So my recommendation would be somebody make a motion as to what you want to actually do and take a quick vote on it.
I make a motion that we allow this gentleman to downgrade his membership.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Any public comment? Call the question.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. Thank you. Last thing I brought up in the last meeting is the prospect of either an unlimited Twilight Golf program or an actual Twilight Golf membership. And I have emailed you the data that Andy had put together, and I just wanted to bring it back up for consideration if you guys would like to do that. I know we have, we recently accepted some guys that normally played at the municipal golf course, took advantage of our 50% off membership, probably about six or eight of them. When their 50% off membership runs out, I don't know if we would get them to be a full member or executive member. It's very possible. They would probably fall more into this category. And I think we have a couple other folks that, you know, are residents here, and they just kind of like to get out, husband and wife, and play in the afternoon, and that's it. I would like it to be considered that we could initiate this program, whether it's an actual membership or just a program that we run. I'm open to either. I think it's, I just think it's a program that could add a little value to our bottom line.
I'm looking at what you got. It says play before 3:30 at a discounted rate of 25% off the resident rate. Why would you include that?
That was just part of a proposal that would be more appealing. It's not something that would be required to say, to put in there. It would be just an added bonus if the board does not like that. I'm open to taking out. I mean, I don't see an issue with it. If they pay three grand, they could get, you know, some sort of break before 3:30, but it's for discussion as well.
How did you come up with the number?
Yeah, so Andy put that together as basically if a single member plays two-and-a-half rounds a week, that's 130 rounds, at $15 a round. He basically put, if we average $15 a round for every round that they played in Twilight, which could be eight holes, nine holes, 15 holes, seldom do they get 18. So he said basically two-and-a-half rounds for a single, which would give them 130 rounds at 15, comes to that number, and a Twilight family, which would be four rounds a week, would be 208 rounds at $15 a round, would be the 3120.
What do we charge for nine holes?
Depends on what time of year. I mean, it could be anywhere. I'm not 100% sure, but it's 20, probably $25 or something, 20 to 25. I mean, this time of year, it gets dark at 5:30, so if you can't play until 3:30, I mean, you're lucky to get nine in.
But if somebody's wanting to play nine holes, you're going to charge them 25, or is this guy?
Well, at this time of year, well, you know, the Twilight fees, you know, we have regular Twilight fees, but it'll be more than that. It'll probably be 20 bucks.
How much money do you think this is going to generate over, in other words, we're currently giving them a discount for Twilight Golf, so they're playing, and your thinking is that this membership is going to create more golf or more revenue or a little of both, and how much? I just don't see it.
Sure, so say that group of six to eight guys, if they decide not to do this, then they may play one round a week here or two rounds a month here, and then they may go play elsewhere, you know? So when you put this incentive out there, it kind of makes them spend all their money here, if you know what I mean. They'll be less apt to spend their money at other golf courses and move around.
But we're looking at eight people?
I'm thinking we, I mean, like I said, it could be more than that, but I mean, that's kind of the group that I'm targeting to do that, so it's something that we could put out there and we could move it forward. It could be more than that, but that's kind of where I would start. And I know I have at least one resident family couple that wants to join this, so there would be one family right out of the gate.
I got a problem with the extra discount that you're offering, otherwise I'm okay with it. Anytime you're discounting off the resident rate, just, anytime you're discounting off the resident rate, that's not a good thing. Sorry.
So that's fine. If that's the consensus, we'll strike through that and we can approve with that being removed, if everybody is okay with that.
I mean, may I make a recommendation? I don't think the board was prepared to have this conversation today. Perhaps we should wait till the next meeting and put it on the agenda to have a, I mean, I'm the one that has the copy of it right now.
Yeah, I don't have the copy in front of me.
And I'd like to, the most recent information that you have, maybe we put out again.
And just to confirm, I mean, if this is a new potential rate, it's going to have to be advertised. Am I understanding that correctly?
I would assume if it's a, if we categorize it as a membership, I wouldn't think absolutely, but I mean, we could.
But we really should have a conversation on it when everybody's prepared to discuss it.
Yeah, and I guess I'd like to see some analysis as to how much revenue you think it's going to generate. I, my take is it's a lot of work for not that much revenue.
So we put it on for next month?
Yeah, I think that's a good call.
Okay, Supervisor, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Could you look into tables for outside on the patio?
Yeah, we've actually started that process. I think it's something that we can, we can put together. Yeah, we've started that conversation this week, so I am looking into that.
Okay, can you give us an updated at the next meeting then?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's, it's right at this time of year when I think a lot of people would utilize sitting outside, especially if we're going to go to, having the golfers go to the back room. There's the back room and then there's outside, and that still leaves the dining area available for people that want to dine in a nice atmosphere. I think it's something we should pursue.
We had a conversation, there's a bunch of women that are going to other places to congregate.
Well, that's not to say that we wouldn't go out there.
Is that any of the attention?
Sure. So when I'm looking into that, I will look into furniture and see what we have, that we have available, if there's going to be any cost to furniture, and we will see what kind of capacity we can put out there. I mean, we have the whole lawn, but I'd assume we'd like to stick to the concrete pad out there. We don't have to, but it's kind of be the idea, so I'll look into it further.
Just, I was talking to Patty already.
Right.
We're not looking to spend a lot of money. No, just looking to figure it out.
No, I definitely agree with that. Okay.
I've got two questions for you. I get mixed up between the golf committee meeting and this meeting. Did we, last meeting, I think we talked about that referral program. Mike, I think you, we had a conversation on it. How did we leave it? I listened to the notes and I couldn't figure it out.
So the referral was the same thing that we've always done in the past. The question, I believe, that came up in that meeting was if somebody joined the 50% off program, whether the referral fee was based on that, or we would wait till they actually joined a full membership before we would give the referral fee. And what came out of that meeting was we decided that the referral fee would be based on when they joined a full membership and not based on the 50% off membership, so if somebody referred a new member that joined in the 50% off membership, they would not get a referral fee until basically year two, is where we got to that.
All right, and then the other question was, again, I'm not sure which meeting this was, we talked about phones in the cart barn in case of emergency after the pro shop is closed. Which meeting was that?
That was...
Last year, last meeting?
That was, that was in this meeting, yes.
Have we made any progress on that?
I don't believe we made a decision. I don't believe we made a decision to change any of our operations at that time that I'm aware of. I know it was a discussion, but I believe.
Well, I personally think it's a good idea to have a phone available once the pro shop is closed, in case there's a problem on the course and somebody needs to call somebody.
I agree, and I thought we had that discussion and kind of said, yeah, that's a safety thing we need to do, so if it wasn't clear before, I think we need to make it clear now.
So, yes, do we have to do anything crazy?
Are you talking about like a landline phone inside the cart barn? Do we, do we have any landline phones in the cart barn?
Whether it's a landline phone or a dedicated cell phone or whatever, we need to have some way that if somebody's on the course after hours, they've got somebody they can call.
Especially if you're going to talk about a Twilight rate next time, where we know people are going to be out after the 5:30 closing, you got to have to have something. So you'll check into that and figure out how we're going to do it and get back to it?
Absolutely. I mean, I could probably act on that without investigating it too far. I'm sure it's just going to be an added cost for that, but I can't imagine it's anything crazy.
Or unless we have the same phone number, but inside the menu to redirect.
Right, so if it's a landline situation where we can do that, then that would be...
Redirect to a cell phone.
Then that would be very easy, albeit I'd prefer, if we're going to do this, I'd prefer the cell phone method because the cart guy's not sitting by the telephone all the time. He's out picking the range or washing carts or things like that, so a cell phone would make better sense.
We could add a cell phone to the Verizon plan, you know, specifically for that, and have the person in the cart barn carry that phone on them, because they're all, you know, they're moving constantly in the barn, so a landline doesn't seem as feasible. I was just asking if there was one in there, I didn't know.
I'm not sure, but yeah.
But a cell phone would...
I think the cell phone makes better sense, though.
Get back to us.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with acting on it, if that's okay with the board.
If you can set it up so that after hours, it just goes to that one, we don't have to change any information to the golfing public, so I just want to be sure that if anybody's on the course and they need help, they've got a number they can call that's going to get somebody.
That should go in that flyer that goes in your, or something on the front of the car.
Yeah, no, we can, yeah, we can, we can put it right on our placards. It's, I mean, that's not a big deal.
So if you guys are going to do it, you're going to let us know when it's done?
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Ray. Okay, any other staff reports?
I'll give the remaining staff reports as part of my report.
Okay. So I don't know if this is going to come up in your report or not, but I was caught a little bit. I read the report that Ariel sent yesterday, and she said, as discussed, I don't remember hearing that we had a crash and lost data, and I'm concerned that we're losing data without a backup.
Well, we've purchased new software, and we're almost finished in completing, including all that information. The software that we had for recreation was outdated, but currently, yes, the new software will be backed up, and we're very close in completing that entire database, so a lot of new features for Rec Desk, we'll be able to send emails specifically to our recreation membership, the same as Sunning Lake Golf Club. Just, it's, it's been needed for a while, so we're almost complete with that. So yes, it will be backed up.
Okay. Okay.
We're just talking to Ariel, not on recreation.
This was a staff report item.
On Ariel's end it up. Yeah, I saw it. What exactly is she trying to cook up for, with Lamar, for outdoor billboards? I don't, I didn't, I don't remember ever talking about outdoor billboards.
She's getting a proposal that she's going to bring to us. We haven't discussed it.
Yes, because we currently have multiple billboards along Highway 27 for the Sunning Lake, Florida's centerpiece community. We've done that for the last year, so we're looking into that again as a possibility.
Is there, do we ever get results? Is there a way to get results from billboard advertising? I mean, I don't know, is there?
That was part of the marketing program that we had with the group out of Orlando that we paid $75,000 for. That's why we did it last year as part of that program, and Ariel's looking into whether or not it's something we want to continue.
So unless someone says, I saw you on the billboard, there's really no other way to know, you know, unless they do discuss it with us of how they, how they came across Sunning Lake.
Okay. Also want to bring up, I know I'm going to lose the changing of the pricing to play shuffleboard. I already understand that. However, I still don't understand why we don't offer daily passes for shuffleboard, and I look, you sent me all the information, and I appreciate that, but we have daily passes for the pool, but we don't have daily passes for the fitness center. And I just think we should have daily passes for everyone, so that if somebody wants to bring their son or their out-of-town guests to play shuffleboard or even to play pickleball, they're able to do it for a day. We may pay about five bucks for it, that's fine, but we don't offer it right now. And again, as I mentioned in previous meetings, I think we made a mistake and we should correct the mistake.
I would support that. I think there should be day passes. Well, we already talked about the shuffleboard and it being locked up, and you're going to send out a need blast, hey, members, we have this available.
Correct.
But one of the things you did say there was that it was going to the membership that has signed up for. I think we need to go to everybody and let them know, we've got a shuffleboard out there, this is the hours of operation, that's where the stuff's at. And, but I think the day pass is a good idea, too. A lot of people don't know whether they really want to join and play shuffleboard, but if they go out there and try it, maybe they like it, and maybe they'll join.
We can do that. We can honor a day pass for the racket club. You said fitness center as well, if they wanted to bring a guest? Did you say, you said fitness?
Uh, no, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Racket club.
You can do it at the pool.
Correct, that is correct, yes.
But you can't do it at the racket club. And I would include the racket club, not the fitness, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
Center you want to bring.
I just wanted to clarify.
It just has to be some way that you can, because I know now, in some of our extra things that we do, they just, there's something going around. They said, well, I'll just bring you as a guest. We got to stop that. We got to make sure we get the guest money. And we do it at the pool because they got to walk by, you know? So all I can say to you is you got to make sure, because they're going to do it, whether we pass this or not, they're going to try to get in and pay nothing if we don't make sure that they have to go someplace to buy the day pass.
Get the pass.
And go in, and that's, I agree with Ray, but you can't just say that, because I just know what people are. They're going to, they're just going to walk in and say, you're my guest, so it's free, and that's not what it is.
On the other hand, it's brought to my attention because they were not allowed to do it, so somebody must be checking.
Yeah, no, I...
Yeah, they're doing it. They know that they're not, but I've heard several people said so-and-so took me to the, whatever, to pickleball. They said I could play for one day free as a guest. You know, and that's the kind of stuff, we got to stop that, that's all. And I'm not picking on just pickleball, but the only way we do it at the pools because they can't get through.
Correct, we don't have a full-time person at the racket club. So what we can do is communicate to the community and to the membership that we will have a day pass available for the racket club to bring a guest, where you go to purchase that and the hours of operation, and we do have our security staff check at the racket club occasionally on those that are there. I mean, at night, it's pretty busy lately, so we do have... I mean, at night, it's pretty busy lately, so we do have that occasional check. I'm not saying that security needs to be there every day. That's not what I want, but I do, I do want those that are members to understand that we, that we will now offer a guest pass.
Now, is that something we need to publish?
I mean, it's published under the pool. I mean, we're talking $5, $5 per...
I think, I think probably the easiest way to do it would just, instead of having separate ones for the pool and the racket club, is just say, there's, you know, amenity day pass and make it a, you know, whatever the dollar amount is. So that way, it's one pass, and that's going to get you racket, shuffleboard, pool access, whatever, for that day.
That's right.
That's the, I think, because I think that one of the biggest concerns is there's a waiver involved, correct? That they're signing a waiver, so we want to make sure that they're...
Membership, yes. Yeah.
Would that be fine? Goodbye, Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Will we go back? I got one more. Back to Mike for a minute. I've got this list of stuff that we don't seem to finish. Rules and regulations of golf. Why aren't we supposed to vote on that? That was the whole situation, the whole theory behind getting, changing them and the age thing about turning 80. I thought we were going to do an RFP and vote on, or vote on it to make, officially approve them. And we talked about, I thought it was already consented.
Yeah, I thought it was done by consensus.
It was done by consensus.
Consent and approve, so that means we approved it?
Yes, it's official. We made the changes. It's been updated on the website, and Mike had...
I spoke with Andy this morning. We plan on emailing that out to the membership early next week.
Okay, great.
Okay. Now we'll go to the general counsel report.
Okay. Just a few things. Spoke to Scott Lacony yesterday afternoon. The Castro reply brief has been filed. The water meter lawsuit and stuff, we're supposed to be getting emailed, copy of it today, and it's being filed today. I had some conversations with the Richard Johnson and the bondholder group. There are three different properties that they are wanting the district to foreclose on. I'm not really sure that based, is their contention that that's our responsibility to file those foreclosures? I'm reviewing some of the paperwork, have a talk with Omar when he gets, early next week, to find out that is actually the case. I think probably the best course of action, what we'll probably do is send out demand letters, because these are properties that have, you know, houses on them, and if we send out a demand letter, we may be able to get a response. We'll have to actually file suit, but if it comes down to filing suit, I don't know that that's necessarily the district's responsibility to file suit for the bondholder lien, so I'll get back to you on that if that's something that we have to do. But hopefully, we'll just send out demand letters, and that'll cure the problem. Other than that, if there's any questions.
Where are we in the gas tax?
You've read my memorandum, and I think that's probably where we're stopping for right now until I get some further direction as far as where we can move forward with that.
I haven't done any further research. I mean, there's really not any further research. I just, I haven't, until there's board direction on that, I'm not going to pursue anything to the county as a, as a possibility.
What kind of direction do you need from the board?
What do you think?
I think...
Based on what he said, we should be able to get this money.
Well, I don't, I don't know that. I mean, it's, the question is whether or not, first of all, for the last 40 years, I know that, no, I say that wrong. The district took over the roads maintenance in 1980-ish. Is that correct?
That sounds correct.
Okay. So the question is whether or not the county would be willing to provide some of their budgeted funds that they already receive in gas tax to Sun and Lake. That's the big question. I would like, if, I mean, if the board wants me to have those discussions with the county, I can do that, but I, you know, at this point, I don't know. That's the question.
What the memorandum says is we have no direct access to gas tax funds.
Yeah, it's not available from the State of Florida Department of Revenue. We know that, I've said that. The question is now, the only way for us to pursue those taxes is through Highlands County and whether or not they would be willing to give us a percentage. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And now that we have a new liaison on the county board, I think that would be a topic that we should raise to his attention as to something the board would like the county to do and get some immediate feedback from the board. It may need to go further than that, but I think that would be a first step at least, to at least let him know that we feel that we are entitled to some of that tax dollars.
I was going to invite Mr. Scott Kerewak to our board meeting in December, so I certainly, I'm looking forward to a meeting with them, and I can mention that to him.
Okay. You might forewarn him that it'll come up at the December meeting if he's there.
Okay. I mean, you're, well, he doesn't take office until, I believe, next week formally, so I will be talking to him before the next meeting, before our next meeting.
Okay.
So he's the one who would say no, or say we can try it?
No, he can't say yes or no. He's, he's our liaison to the board. It would have to be a board action, so it would take a majority of the board.
Yeah, and that's what my, looking forward, that what I would see happening is him, you know, us having a discussion with him and potentially the county attorney and saying, those are our thoughts, this is our basis and why we feel that we're entitled to some of this money. Now, are you willing to, see if the county attorney has the same assessment?
Exactly. County attorney has to be involved in that discussion.
Because if the county attorney's going to say no, then we need to do some more research and potentially get an attorney general opinion and see if the attorney general agrees with, you know, my review and our potential access to some of those funds.
So we'll talk about that in December.
But I think that we need, I think you should be pursuing it, because I think there's potential for us to receive that money. So I think the subject needs to be brought up with.
I plan on talking to Mr. Kerewak.
All right. I mean, worse is, it's a no. It's not, yeah, the worst that can happen is nothing changes.
Yeah. I think there are steps that we can proceed, and I think the first step is to talk with our liaison to the board.
Do we have an update on Unit 12 over talking? Do we know what's, anything going on there?
With Mr. Horneck?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything new.
Yes. As, he's still in the due diligence process as far as the traffic on Schumacher Road. He doesn't foresee any issues from the county, but he is, he's made the comment that he's on Plan C, which, which means that he's working through some of his investors and, and things like that right now. Other than that, I don't have much more of an update, other than he's still in that due diligence process. Was there anything?
Let me ask you a question. Once, I mean, theoretically, he can do anything he wants with that property, right? If he wants to make it a park, he can do that.
Theoretically, yes.
We have no say-so in it, is that correct?
I don't know that that's correct, because it's currently zoned for several small lots, and any change to that plan would have to come back for review and approval, correct?
So he can't, once he owns the property, he would go, if he needed it rezoned, my understanding, they're 50 by 100 lot, by 100 lots in there.
It has to be rezoned, we already know that, correct? Based on what he is planning?
Replated, has to be replated and possibly rezoned, yes. Yes.
So we'll know, you'll let us know when he knows?
Yes, sir.
Can we be more specific, do you think, on the investors?
I mean, I...
He's got six months, so other than that, we can just hearsay until then, then we'll know whether or not he's moving.
I mean, I'm hoping, we're hoping that, you know, through the due diligence process, he will be able to find, you know, the investors and present his plan the way he has it. I mean, that's, you know, he could change it, that's very possible, but right now, I don't know of any other details, so.
Who's representing Hurley? Are you representing Hurley?
Yes, I'm representing Hurley, yes. And you have anything else, David?
No, I'm done unless there's any more specific questions.
That's all I have for you. What is everybody?
Okay. So now we're moving on to the general manager's report that is going to include the other staff reports.
Omar should be here anytime for the golf management discussion.
Okay.
Do you want to, you want to, you want me to go into my report, or you want to ask me a few questions on roads?
Well, I was concerned, and I was hoping that Mike would have an answer.
Can you speak more into the microphone again? People in the audience really can't hear unless we're almost eating.
See, I can hear now, so, that's why I'm not close to it. I was hoping that Mike can give us an answer. Like, the last meeting, we talked about the situation at Ponce with the traffic, and we never did find out what the speed machine told us. I think you were evaluating the information at the last meeting.
I'll send it to the board.
Okay, because we were supposed to get that report.
Yes. I'm not recommending, as far as a speed pump at that area, we've already made that decision, but we are going to do some striping on that road.
Okay, but we did want to see the reports to see what the...
So we'll get that sent to you, yes.
So is there speeding going on? Are they right? Do you know?
I don't know.
I mean, if they're right...
Yeah, but, I'm sorry?
If they're right, we got to, is painting going to be enough?
I'll get that. We're still going to do the striping on the road, no matter what the, I understand that Chrissy's saying that it's online, but...
Yeah, the report's online, because I'm the one who puts all the data together, and the speeding on there is not high at all. It's like about anywhere from 30 to 40% of people are speeding down that road.
Only 30 or 40%?
Yeah. I could pull up the report if you want to look at it right now, because it is online, but it's very low.
But I'll get that sent to the board specifically for Ponce.
I'd have to believe that's a high estimate, because with the curve, I don't know how any rational person would speed around that curve, so...
92% of people traveling down the road northbound are following the speed limit.
92%?
92%.
So it's 80% speeding, yeah.
Yeah. And then southbound, it's 87% are following the speed limit, and 12% are speeding.
Let me make sure that that speed device is, that, that report is based on where that speed device was located on the south end of Ponce. So let me get you that information specifically to the address.
Where is that report on, in the system, so I know?
It's on the monthly reports, online.
So that just has the last 30 days, is that what?
Yeah, that's, the dates are on there. It ran from October 12th to October 19th in that area, and it was posted at 3827 Ponce and 3700 Ponce.
Okay. Well, it's good to know it's online, so that's... So, all right.
That's it? Okay.
Well, that's it for Hurley.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, for the November newsletter that's coming out next week, I do have a section that says, "Meet the Board." So I do have a picture of all five of you from the shuffleboard courts and some information about each of you and, you know, your terms, and of course, Mr. Branson and Mr. Brooks on the reelection. So I do have a section in the newsletter for all of you, so check that out next week or when the bills come out, I think, at the end of next week, so. I would like to mention that we have received a quote for permanent speakers and audio here in the community center from Basset. We will be moving forward with that, so it takes away the portable units, it changes out these speakers, and I'm not sure, you know, exactly the details behind that. Ariel met with Basset, and we also are looking into, they did receive a quote on the actual headset, so if y'all are interested in wearing a headset versus this, we can order those for you as well. That's an idea. So I think it will make a significant improvement to this building, and so I just wanted to tell you, I was going to move forward with that.
I appreciate it. What's your idea of what the cost is?
Yeah, it's, it's about $4,800 for the, for the permanent speakers. The headsets for each of you, Chrissy also, one and one will be extra. I don't know how, you know, each of you feel about having a headpiece, and it might, you wouldn't have...
It would resolve the issue of having to eat the microphones.
Yes, yes. Are they portable?
Yes, they are.
We're not wired, right?
Correct.
Oh, I think that'd be...
I think that would be wonderful, get rid of some of the wires.
Okay.
Bill, are you hearing this? Are you hearing it? I didn't think so.
I'm hearing.
We are installing a new sound system. No, no, we're, we're moving forward with it.
I just wanted to make sure you were hearing it.
My question is, in American disability, don't they have any kind of grants, ready like that with the barbie or soup?
$4,800?
It's a minimal expense. We're, we're moving forward, and it's getting done.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure you heard.
He's not worried.
Thank you for that.
So I do have an update on Unit 12. If you recall, we did mention that there were lots in Unit 12 that were delinquent. There were also lots that were current. We did send demand letters to those that were delinquent. We have, we, we sent them certified, we sent them regular mail. A lot of those were not delivered, so now, out of 31, we only had four that were actually signed for and delivered. So we have a decision to make, what we need to do from here and see what our cost of foreclosure would be, you know, on those, those particular lots.
Are those lots being, are property taxes being paid on them?
Sun and Lake assessments are not being paid property taxes, I don't know. So we, since the assessments are delinquent, we have the ability to foreclose, but I don't know about the county property tax. I don't know. I'd have to find out.
The only way, if they were being paid, it would seem to me that they'd have better information as to where these people reside, so that you could actually have a place where the letter could get sent to, so that at least you could track it.
True, and actually, our database, we receive all the information from the county, so every single month, we, we sync our databases together as far as addresses, so ours is consistently updated between, that's where we see our information from, so whatever mailing address is with the county will also be with Sun and Lake. So unfortunately, there could be people that have passed away already. We don't, we don't know the details behind it, but...
Yeah, but if they're current on their property taxes, they're getting the notice of, I would think.
Oh, if they're current, see, I don't know if they are. They're delinquent with Sun and Lake.
The assumption would be that if the county doesn't have a current address from them, they're probably not current with the county, and the county can't mail to them either.
That's, that's my assumption at this point, but I, yeah. Also, I believe it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we talked about postponing, you know, capital projects in our budget. I wanted to update you really quick on that. We also talked about merit increases for staff, so the board decided to postpone $552,500 of capital costs until January, just to see, you know, where we are with revenues. With the utility and general fund, I don't expect that, you know, our COVID or anything will affect those funds as far as revenues. As Mike updated you, we are about $220,000 under budget on membership revenue right now. So does it sound right? We budgeted $1,040,000 for golf membership revenue. We've received about $818,000. So we're, so we're trending lower, yeah, so we're, so we're about $200,000 from meeting our budgeted revenue for golf memberships, so that's where we are right now. I think we still have another, it'll be probably up until January before we really have a good feel of where that number is going to be, how close to budget, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, I would say mid-January.
Mid-January or so. So, so that's where we're trending on golf membership revenue. As far as the merit increases, we, in our budget, between the general fund, utility utility fund and the golf fund, total, we had budgeted $49,375 is the number for merit. I'm recommending, since it is in our budget, I would like to go ahead and I'm going to move forward with those merits. We have performed our evaluations internally. And I just wanted to update you on the merit. We also.
Is this all merit, not bonuses?
Correct, this is all merit. This is just what we have budgeted. So, and that's between the golf fund, the general fund and the utility fund. Also, this week, staff has met with our engineer to review the drainage plan and the road plan for Sun and Lake as well. The budget there is about $550,000. And we, you know, we won't be moving forward with that until Drew does a presentation to the board to let you know, okay, this is our drainage plan. This is what we're recommending. This will be our fifth year in drainage, so we've already spent over $1 million in drainage. And then the roads itself, if there's any reason that we need to postpone those projects, we actually could do that as well. The roads and drainage are not part of the $552,000 that the board approved a couple meetings ago. So that's just an update on that.
We talk a lot about golf memberships and how much we're behind there. We're going to get hammered in food and beverage revenue to plan. I looked at the numbers, we could miss by 400,000. I think somebody ought to pay attention to that.
We can certainly, I mean, we don't have the banquets that we've normally had in the past. We don't have the weddings, we don't have.
Well, it's easy to excuse, I mean, to understand why. But my point is perhaps we ought to be a little, make sure we're on top of it.
Absolutely, 100%. On Tuesday, Mike Lemire, Andy Kessling and myself, we participated, or we actually went to the Citrus Golf Trail meeting. The Citrus Golf Trail is an organization that is, you know, it's dedicated to promoting golf within Highlands County. And they are actually forming an LLC. And within that, it's going to be, let me name you the organizations. It's Sebring, Sebring Spring Lake, which is Sebring International Golf. Sun and Lake, Pinecrest, River Greens.
Sebring Municipal.
Sebring Municipal, is that it? There's one more, I think.
The In-N-Out Lakes is actually a partner as well.
They also will be. So this organization is going to be promoting, and its mission is to promote golf here in Highlands County with the assistance.
Outside of, it's more outside of Highlands County as far as promotion.
I'm sorry, promotion outside of Highlands County, but promoting our golf courses within Highlands County. So with the assistance from the Tourist Development Commission, TDC. So we're very excited to see that move forward. And that meeting was on Tuesday. On roads, I wanted to mention that there has been a speed bump ordered for Edgewater. So we'll be installing one on Edgewater Drive. I also mentioned the roads and drainage plan. Staff is working on that for a presentation to the board in December. We also mentioned a meeting with Scott Kerewak, our new liaison for our county commission. I want to thank Chrissy for setting up Zoom again. So we are broadcasting live on Zoom right now. And in addition to Ariel's report that she sent out, we are, we should have next week, cost estimates for the recreation amenities that were presented by the consultant. So I think the board is awaiting to see what some of those cost estimates are so that we can prioritize. The next part of that is to understand the grant funding side and what is available. So I'm hoping that we will have an update for you soon on that. We originally had talked about him presenting the master plan at the December meeting, which is still on track at this point. But I don't know if we still have a lot of changes to the master plan. We wouldn't want to adopt it immediately. We want to, you know, continue that into January. So, I mean, there's no true deadline, but we're working through that now. So as soon as we get those cost estimates on the projects that we discussed, I'll be sending that to you. So, any other questions?
Once upon a time, we did a survey on Sun and Lake operations. And we had a meeting over it and discussed it and everybody turned.
Here's your microphone.
And everybody turned in their solutions of what they were going to do based on the survey. We've never talked about it since. So at the next meeting, I would like to have a report on the progress made by each of the areas pertaining to that survey. Is that possible?
Yes.
Next. General manager's job description. How are we coming on that? That was, if I remember correctly, you were going to present that to us at this meeting.
I was planning on doing that in December.
December's meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that is to include your objectives?
Yes, sir.
Just to go on the record, I mean, we've got a problem with the water fountains on two holes. The Deer Run 16, Turtle 2, the fountains aren't working, haven't been working. Somebody's got, I mean, it's getting carried away. We've got to get this fixed. It would be nice. So I'm just requesting that we step it up a little bit more than we have. Or tell me what the problem is.
Isn't Turtle 2 ran by the homeowners association over there?
I think the HOA paid for the initial cost, but the Sun and Lake has taken over maintenance. So we are waiting on our lake management company to give us an estimate. I don't have a date. I don't know why it's taken them so long. This is going to be the second estimate. The first vendor that we had, we had, without going into any details, we needed to have another company come look at it. So it's unfortunate that it's taken this long, just to get our lake management company out here to give us a quote on both of those. So we are aware, we're doing what we can to get some repair estimates and move forward. So I'm sorry it's taken so long.
There's always something in it.
I guess, are we doing a discussion to, of to and from?
I didn't hear your question. I didn't hear your question.
No, I'm trying to figure out if I should bring this up an hour later. I'll bring it up now. This newsletter, and I think it has gotten better, but, and we've had conversations on this. Maybe if I get the board to agree, we can. The newsletter, by the time it comes out, half of the month that it comes out for, it comes out for two months. By the time it comes out, half of the month of the first month is already gone. It's already, we're past it. I think we've got to change the mentality on how we do this newsletter. And I know we're trying, I mean, by putting pictures of the board members and little information about us. I mean, that's a good step, but I think we got to get ahead of it. I don't see any benefit of receiving in October, and I get mine around the 20th or something like that, the newsletter for October, November. I should be getting a newsletter for November, December. And I think we got to change our mentality on this. This could be a great tool, because we know it goes to everybody. But we got to make it a great tool.
Can you and I and Ariel meet, let's the three of us meet and sit down and talk about that?
Do you guys agree?
I agree.
Yeah, just bring it to us when you get done discussing it.
Well, there's, I'd like more input, because I thought that she had changed a few dates on there. But maybe you can sit down with the two of us and show us what exactly that you're looking for, so that we understand.
Well, I think.
Very easy, it's a timeliness issue. That's one thing.
It mails out with our water bills at near the end of the month. And at the end of October, we got the October calendar with the Halloween tag to put on our doors. And, you know, the tag was timely, but to hear about October, at the end of October, isn't very helpful.
Right. So I'd be happy to sit down with you. Let me know when you're available.
Sounds good, alright.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
The resource guide that was just given to us, is this given out to every, all residents?
It's not given out to all residents, but we do have it available at the district office. But what it is, is we have a new resident packet. And inside the new resident packet, we have a resource guide. We have information about Sun and Lake. We have the solid ways, the garbage schedule. We have emergency and Sun and Lake phone numbers in there. So it's within a new resident packet. So if you would like to see that packet, I'd be more than welcome to give that to you. But they're available for anybody in the community.
But how do they know that it's available? I think, I thought, I think it's an excellent book.
We just received them. We just received them. So my plan is, is to promote that publication. We'll do it somehow through an e-blast or within the newsletter that we have a brand-new resource guide. But we just received them printed, so we haven't done anything yet to get the word out that they're there. And we do have them at the front desk, you know, available as well.
But it would also seem to me like that that would be something that'd be nice to put in some of these areas around here of places. You know, like.
We're going to have it at the.
When you cross the border coming into Florida.
Oh, at the tourist center.
There's this resource guide that talks about Sun and Lake community. I don't know, I mean, yeah, it's very specific on what we do. But I think it's, I think it's a good book. And I think, I think everybody in our district should be getting one. Because it tells you what we do with these assessments, for one thing. And I think it should, I mean, you've got a lot of people that have been here for a long time. Yeah, they probably know what we do with it. But I just thought it was put together quite well. And, you know, I think it needs to get out there pretty.
I'd like to give each of you, you know, the new resident packet, so you can see all the information in it and.
But that's only to the new resident.
Yeah, correct. But the resource guides are available to the community. I wasn't planning on mailing them out, but we can. My idea was to promote and let the community know that those resource guides are available at the district office. I'd like to have them available here at the pool office and.
Can we make a digital version available online?
Yes, absolutely. It's probably there. I don't, I wasn't, I didn't ask that far into it yet. But what I'd like to do is publish that online as well.
You're giving people.
Into the website.
If you put it online.
Come on.
Well, on the website.
It needs to be there so that people can access it if they want to. I think it's, I think it's a well-done book. I think it's a little too extensive for a free take-one handout, because it would get very expensive to put it out there in that form. You know, if we want to put a, if we want to put a handout at the visitors, at the tourist destination stops, then I think putting together a less expensive one would be there. But I think it's a, it's a good thing to get promoted as to what the resources are and what we do here. But I think it would be expensive to try to print that for mass distribution.
It is expensive. And I will tell you, several years ago, we did have a card. I guess it's one of those pull-out cards for Sun and Lake through visitflorida.com. They were offering some free advertising. So it's like, it's a front and a back for Sun and Lake, Florida centerpiece community. We haven't advertised recently for that, but it was available at the Welcome Center on I-75 between the Florida Georgia line and then the Jacksonville, which would be, or the north of Jacksonville, it's I-95, a Welcome Center as well. So we did have those. I can, you know, I haven't thought about it, but we could look into possibly putting together something for the Welcome Centers again and see what the cost is as an idea. So we did that before through Visit Florida. I think maybe through, was it through the Chamber?
It was, it was a Chamber initiative at the time. And the lady, our local representative from Visit Florida came by. And I remember, because I put our piece together. I was just kind of fishing at the time, because I didn't know, you know, how many people would see this would come. But I actually put, I might even, it was either a 50% off dinner for two or a free dinner for two for anybody that found that card and brought it to Sebring. And lo and behold, I actually had somebody make it here. So it was kind of, I was not expecting that, but.
So you got one response.
One person came, I couldn't believe it. You know, and they got it from I-75.
The Welcome.
The Welcome Center. So I believe they still have a program for that. It's just not, it was free at that time.
It was free because it was, I don't know why.
Does Citrus Trail plan on doing something like that?
The Citrus Trail, as far as that goes, the Citrus Golf Trail, just so everybody knows, has about an $8,000 to $9,000 budget. It's not, they don't, they don't really have a ton of money. A lot of their money is spent in conjunction with the TDC, because the TDC matches a lot of what we do. And we basically already spent our entire budget for this year. The biggest project that we have on, as far as the Citrus Golf Trail goes, is we have a fam tour, a familiarization tour. And we have writers come from all walks of life, from the Associated Press, Golfers Journal, some other guys. And they come visit our, you know, our facilities. They're going to come see all of our facilities, stay at the end of the lakes. And basically, what they'll do is they'll go home and they'll write a nice little article about us. And we've done this before. We've had, you know, on the Long Island golfer, we, you know, we've been in there. We've been in several publications throughout the Midwest from doing this. But that's kind of where that bulk of that budget goes, is things like that, trying to get awareness of the Citrus Golf Trail outside of Highlands County. But it's not a big enough budget to tackle something like that. Sorry if I went real far there.
We pay $9,000?
We did not pay $9,000. Our total budget with everybody's is about $9,000.
That's the TDC money that comes from the TOT on the local hospitality.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, unfinished business.
None.
New business.
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comments. Now, this is for anything other than the golf course management companies, because we'll be discussing.
I'll just comment on that anyway.
Okay.
Bill Murray, resident, I have a couple concerns. One is that you're looking at, first of all, I'd like to say to Tanya, thank you for the audio, because I thought, it's me, but it's just a blur. So I appreciate that upgrade.
You're welcome.
Not going to get my hearing tested just yet.
I think the board here is going to approve that.
Hopefully. Received a memo, I am a group leader of, on Fridays of a group. And the memo said that we were to tell our people to go to the dining area after golf. Well, that's all said and good. I know why you're trying to do that. Sounds good. I'm just not sure that's my job to tell them. I can tell them where they go after that. It's up to them. I cannot make them go in the back dining area. I cannot make them go outside. I can suggest that that's what you'd like them to do after that. I think we're shooting in the dark here. But that's my comment there. The second comment is concerning the pickleball shuffleboard area. I play pickleball. We have a lot of people playing pickleball, which is good. I'm just not sure that all of them are paying their fair share. There is a fee for a resident who is not a golf member. My wife pays that. So that's my concern. And I don't know how you're going to really control that, because the logistics are so far apart from the pool area to the pickleball area. And you can't really afford to have somebody there during whatever the peak hours could be. But I think it's something you're going to have to look at. And like I said, the logistics of the area is really not conducive for trying to control the in and out of there. But yesterday, the gate was open and it was packed. And I'm not sure they're all our people. But I just, if they pay their fair share, not a problem. But that's my concerns. Thank you.
I agree, Bill, because that was my concern about charging, because I know people walk in, the gates open a lot when I go over there. We just got to figure a way out to make them pay.
I think it's tough. And I think it's really going to be tough to try to control that, because it's so logistically far apart from the pool. Weekends, weekends, if you bring a guest, where do you pay? You can't pay. So, I mean, you know.
Yes, yes, you can.
I think a problem.
The pool office is open seven days a week. Yes, I mean, so, so yes, if you wanted to pay for a guest or pay for your membership, you could do so here at the pool office.
How do people get in, how do people get in now? How do people get in now, to fitness courts?
Well, you have a pass, they issued a pass, right, and it's electronically controlled.
Which works fine as long as the gate is closed, if the gate is open.
I'm sorry?
Which works fine as long as the gate is closed, but if the gate is open...
Right. Well, I mean, as a member, I'm sure, you know, we try to keep the gate closed.
Correct.
As a member bringing a guest that hasn't paid, the gate's open. So, I mean, that's been, I think, a problem since that was created that way. I don't think, it didn't just happen yesterday. It's been going on, and yes, security has been there.
But I do have another idea, and I'm glad you brought this up, because I've heard some concerns from other members as well. So, I do have an idea. Your calendar, the tournament calendars and things are posted, so we know what days are very busy and what days are not, and so I do have an idea of setting up a staff person to check, and this is unfortunate that we have to do this, but we're going to have to set up a staff person as they come in, just, you know, have a membership list and give your name. I don't know what else to do. I mean, security, spot checking, I know has been okay, but it's not enough.
Well, it's just, it's just too large of an area to cover in a 24-hour period.
It is. And I'm not asking for a staff person, or I won't be requesting that the staff person do this every single day, but I think we need to do this initially to let our members and guests know that you will need a membership pass to enter, and that we can have a guest pass available for that particular day if we need to.
I agree with you. I think if you let them know that you are checking...
Yes.
Because I can't go to Tanglewood and play.
Right.
But they come here and play.
But I realize that having security is not enough, and I've already thought about that. I wasn't going to talk about that today, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
I'm just happy that you are going to...
I acknowledge it, yes.
Yeah, and let them know that you're checking.
And Bill, on your other point, excuse me, Mr. Norcross, I just was made aware yesterday of what they asked the group leaders, but I can tell you, I was not aware that you were asked to do that, and that's the problem. I've heard complaints before, so, and I'm sure that comes from our management company, that they ask our group leaders to do that, and that's, I've heard complaints for five years about asking our group leaders to make our people do stuff, so that's something we can publish and talk to Mike about. I don't think it's fair, because if they're making that rule, then they ought to come out and listen to the complaints.
Well, I was, I was, thought that maybe it came from you too, Mike.
No, that did not come from us, because that...
I disagree. That has come from our discussions here, trying to make the dining area more secure.
Yeah, but we didn't make it, we didn't vote or say, "Go do it." I mean, you might have talked, been talking to them, but this is done by three members.
That's what I thought it was.
You need three members to do stuff.
We brought it up, saying there was ways of making the dining area...
And I agree, but I didn't know about it. I agree with you 100%, Craig, but how come, just remind you here, who implemented it? We did. Not to move them yet, we said there's ways we can do it, but I never remembered saying, "Do it."
Ron sent out a message asking us to tell the people that we would like them to meet in the back. That's not a directive to do it.
Then why do we ask our group leaders to do something like that? Because you know it's very contentious, and I agree, I think they should be moved, but my complaint is making them do that.
Nobody's making them do that. They were asked to do it. In my opinion, they weren't, it was asked for those people to mention it to the groups. Now...
What if they tell you they don't want to do that?
They just, they don't.
Okay.
There's no requirement to do it.
Okay. Mr. Norcross.
Good morning again. Quickly on the follow-up on Bill Murray's problem, don't you have card readers or something like that to insert in?
Yes, we do, but the problem is, is many people will leave the gate open, and then people can just come in.
It's one card reader and five people behind him, right?
There you go.
I got it, all right. Well, maybe something can be done. I understand their problem. I would like to give a shout-out here, because there's two people here that don't normally show up, because they're out there working, and want to say hello to Robin and Kent, both supervisors on Turtle and Deer Run. I think they've had to deal with a lot of problems this year, and they should be given some kind of acknowledgement, which I do right now, because of the various projects, like the tree trimming out there that's done, was done very well. You'll have rainwater problems out there. The cost has been marked differently and better, and they have a better grass-cutting project, so my credit to these two gentlemen out there for implementing them under Earl, I understand that, so that, I hope they, they don't show up here all the time, because they got to be working. All right. So, I did hear, I did hear briefly that something about emergency phone numbers, because you have, if somebody asks...
We want to be sure that we have a working phone in the cart barns, so that after hours, if anybody's on the course and needs assistance, they have a place they can call.
Correct. What I was going to suggest, either put emergency number on the golf cart, or you can, future scorecards maybe have an emergency number posted there, because people have their own golf cart and they have company carts, so you've got two different issues there. The third issue that I brought up, I sent emails, and I might have missed the return, on the Schumacher project, we had Mr. Hornick here, and it sounds like a viable project, but he requested the two roads be fixed or made new. One was the exit to, from Unit Area 12 to Sunland Lake Boulevard, and widening the Schumacher Road, the county road. Well, the county has just repaved Schumacher, so Hornick requested to be a three-lane highway or widen it. How is that going right now?
Let me clarify, Schumacher didn't, was not an issue for Mr. Hornick specifically. He didn't need it widened. The concern was whether the county would require it to be widened and therefore force the developer to pay the expense. If that was the case, then he would pull out. If the county wants to widen it, that's a county issue that they may or may not do. At this point, based on the earlier report, Mr. Hornick is not seeing Schumacher as an issue with the county. He has some other concerns, but we don't know exactly where that stands, but that wasn't a concern that Mr. Hornick wanted the county to do it. The question was whether the county was going to require it as an issue for development.
A regulation, obviously. It's the same thing as we have Sunland Lake Boulevard two-lane because the tremendous amount of traffic coming in. I understand that, but one other question, I understand that Billy Casper Organization now is Indigo, and it's a nice brochure here, nice colored brochure. The only problem is, I looked at the bottom, it's got a lot of red numbers there, which is not too good.
Yeah, that's our discussion item that will follow this.
So, my question is, the address of the Indigo Company now, is it North Carolina?
I, yeah.
Nobody knows?
I'm confused, because I got their proposal that says Antares, and Indigo came up on the brochure here, so I'm not sure what Billy Casper is, but we'll get that clarified.
I think it's North Carolina, because the other companies, the other five companies or so, give their address, and the closest one is Orlando, so that may be a concern also when you evaluate these RFPs, I guess. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If the board wanted to know, it's Reston, Virginia.
And where it's been, it hasn't changed.
Good morning, everybody. It's Robert Edo. Thank you for taking your time and efforts. You all do a great job, and I appreciate it. Reference to petition, I thank you for taking seriously concerns about speeding on punts and you know. Two questions, once the white stripe gets laid down, do you go back and analyze after a month or so and see if that doesn't help out? And do you put another traffic sign up there and reevaluate it, and then go on to the next step? Or you just say, "We'll just let it lay and see what happens"?
We can, we'll reevaluate after we do the striping.
Okay.
But you let us know. I mean, if it's, if you see something, come to a meeting and...
Okay. I know you should talk about the $5 for the...
Guest fee?
Guest thing. I called the pool yesterday and I said, "Wait a minute, I want to play shuffleboard. I want to get into it." There's a date pass for other things, why can't you have, oh, no, it's got to be $120 for yearly membership. So, how would I know whether I would enjoy shuffleboard? I know I would, but I'd like to try it out once, and I, when will that take effect? Any idea?
Well, we'll offer it Monday.
Monday? Okay. In reference to the gentleman that had the back problems, I've had two back surgeries. I understand how serious back surgeries could come about. Mine came about real quick when I was working, and I'm glad you were able to help see him out. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Since I appeared before you a couple of meetings ago and solicited an endorsement for the proposal I've written regarding marketing golf tourism in Highlands County, I received an endorsement from Signature H, the organization that's taken a major position out at Spring Lake. The business model for Signature H is to acquire failing golf resort operations and to turn them around. I don't know why they named this project Signature H. The first name of everybody in the family is Helmet, so they call themselves H1, H2, and H3. I believe it's more likely that H means that it's their eighth project. I know it's not their first. If that assumption's correct, then it's reasonable to assume they would have never gotten to H if they hadn't been reasonably successful with at least most of their first seven. So, I think that their opinion should have some meaning. I'd like to just take a second and quickly summarize the key points of their endorsement. He says, "There's no doubt that golf clubs in Highlands County would benefit greatly from substantial increase in the rounds of golf played on the courses." But let me clarify, rounds are only the beginning. Let me share with you a little of what we've learned about out-of-town guests. They stay. Every hotel near a golf course will benefit from increased golf visitors. They spend. Typically, this typically includes new clothing, golf gear, gifts for the family, et cetera, et cetera. They eat. In line with their spending habits, they often splurge on new dining experiences. They adventure. What happens after golf? They're always asking what else they can do while in the area. They return. The lifetime value of these customers is exceptionally high. With these thoughts in mind, I would like to add our support to your proposal. Speaking for Signature H Group and Sebring International Golf Resort, I hope that the county will appoint a committee to take a serious look at what the county, in partnership with the golf and hospitality industry, can do to make a real difference in the survival and future success of golf operations in Highlands County. Ron Hanley was the liaison for Sunland Lake with the county commission. Ron has attended his last meeting. We sent our endorsement to Ron Hanley. We could perhaps expect him to pass it out along to its successor, or he may not. The point I'm trying to make is that if it's the position of the board of Sunland Lake, that they really want to get behind this project and make it happen, then one of two things needs to take place. We either send a new copy of the endorsement to Scott Corack, or to send a copy of the endorsement to each of the new incoming county commissioners, along with the incumbent, which is Arlene Tuck. A little further, again, if it's the sense of the board that they want this to happen, then I believe the tone of the letter of endorsement should reflect that. And I will leave it at that. I think it's up to you guys to decide whether you want to send a copy of the endorsement to each of the county commissioners that are, will be in place, or Scott Corack, and whether or not to make the letter of endorsement a little more enthusiastic. Thank you.
May I mention, Mr. Woods, you're, you are, you definitely can send our letter to the rest of the county commission. I mean, you can email the county commission our letter if you choose to do so. We just send it to our liaison. But if you do have direct contact with the other commissioners and the new commissioners, you're welcome to send our endorsement, along with the Sebring International Golf Club as well, and that, you know, if you wanted to send that to them in one package. Do you have any other endorsements at this time?
Several.
Several, okay.
Including members of the hospitality community and other golf operations.
So, I did copy Mr. Randy Bosberg in the letter as well, so, but yeah, you're absolutely welcome to send that off to the other commissioners or to the new commissioners.
I can do that well and good. The question becomes, how enthusiastic is Sunland Lake about the proposal? The letter of endorsement is rather matter-of-fact, in my opinion, and leave it at that, if that's what you want, or you could make the endorsement reflect more enthusiasm for the project. Up to you.
I've got, I got to ask, what exactly are you asking for? I'm confused. You got the letter, now you want a different type of letter? What do you, I mean, what are you asking, Cliff?
Well, in our endorsement, we say, at the October 23 meeting, the Sunland Lake Board of Supervisors, pursuant to a four-to-one vote in favor, the Sunland Lake Board directed a letter to be sent to the Highlands County Board of the County Commissioners in support of the proposal submitted by district resident, dah 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 dah. Further, the Sunland Lake Board understands the proposal will not come before the commission as an action item before your tenure ends. If the commission forms a committee to review and research the proposal, the Sunland Lake Board would appreciate the inclusion of a district supervisor or district employee as a member of such committee. That's fine, but a vote of four-to-one essentially communicates that it certainly wasn't unanimous, and it's just a matter-of-fact statement. There's nothing in the endorsement that basically says that we strongly support, you just support it.
Any other public comment? Okay. I defer to the board. Do you want to have the to and from the board now, or at the end, after we've had the discussion on the other management companies? the end, after we've had the discussion on the other management companies? Do you want to have our to and from the board discussion now, or?
Or after.
Or after we've discussed all of the management? After? Okay. Do you want to have a brief recess, and then we'll come back and discuss? Okay. Brief recess.
Just one word. We're having, this is about
This is, this is discuss the whole process.
I don't know. I had to talk to our risk department. It's not white. I don't think it's going to be white. I think it's going to be yellow. I don't know why.
Wherever it goes, wherever the board wants it to go.
I don't know. I'm sorry. I mean, we, I don't plan on discussing it again, so I'm hoping within the next month they have it on the schedule with the family's striping.
Okay. Let's pull this back together and begin the discussion. This is a challenging item. We've all had a lot of reading material, and I think a lot of it was very educational, so that's a good thing. But we have, we put together an ambitious schedule to be able to try to get through the contract discussions and make a decision as to whether we're going to go with somebody else and who. I think now that we have all this material, I unfortunately didn't bring my notes as to what, what exactly our initial schedule was. I don't know if Tanya has that with her or not. But I think today's meeting would be kind of a large overview of the proposals that we have, and determine if there are key issues, and whether or not there are any groups that we want to eliminate at this point. I know there was discussion as to whether or not we could narrow it down to two or three groups to bring in for discussion, or if we wanted to meet with everybody before we eliminated anybody. So I guess I'd just like some general board feedback on, on the concepts of where we go from here, and what you're able to accomplish today.
Yeah, my only thought is that I think if we got to decide who, to get into a deep discussion with only one of our applicants here is kind of hard to do. So I, I think the focus of this meeting is to weed out anybody we want to weed out, or see them all, but it's kind of, we, I don't know how we can talk about anything with none of them here.
Well, we, we need to talk about, I mean, a general overview issue that I have as we go through this is the fact that when you, when you put in the leases, we're, we're essentially, one of the things we've talked about is that we want to get golf to a break-even. When you put the leases in, we're still not there with any of them, so.
Well, I think, I think we are after two years or, well, two of them.
Yeah, we have a path to it.
Yeah, some of them have a path to it, and others are just adding to it.
Right. And I think one of the things that we will learn as we go down that path is that to get there, we may have to look at some directions as to how we get there. So for instance, they, I think almost all of them looked at our food and beverage operations and said, things are out of line. Labor costs are way too high, cost of product is way too high. We can change that, and they're all recommending that we do, and that the, the norm is that we can do that. If we do that, we could suffer some service issues. I would hope that we could balance that. They believe that we should be able to balance that. And at the same time, increasing outside play may have impacts on how we manage our memberships. I think the, the positive is that every one of these are saying that the quality of the courses and the quality of the experience are key to whatever they bring to the table. So I don't think we're issuing, or I don't think we risk anything in regards to that with any of these competitors. But I do think there may be some operational issues that'll come into play as we get into the discussions, and that, and that that's going to be a factor in whether or not we can really get to a break-even, or, or better yet, even a profit. But those are the things that I think we need to be prepared for as we go forward.
Yeah, and that's, but we, we, at least I can't make a judgment on that till I get to talk to them. I mean, we can discuss what we think, but we don't know nothing until we talk to them.
Right.
What their plans are, and so on, and that's what I'm saying. I'm willing to listen, but it's, it's kind of tough to make too many decisions with, with nobody here.
Yeah, well.
But that was, my understanding, that was the whole idea, is that we were going to try to narrow this field down to have a reasonable number of people that we talk to later on. And in reviewing their proposals as they submitted them, I came up with people that I don't think I necessarily need to hear from again. I don't believe they, based on what I'm reading and what their plans are, I didn't see them as the real viable candidates. But when I look at the numbers, I don't see much of a path to what we would like, and that is to get to zero subsidy. There's a couple of them to do, but to me, there's a couple of them that honestly, well, Cypress Golf, the one. I don't know that Cypress Golf has the expertise to do the things that I would like to see done from the management group. I don't see them having sufficient experience in food and beverage. I think they change their, based on what I read through their, they could do a banquet, but basically they would change things to a sandwich shop. And I'm not interested in that. That's why I don't think I really need to see them.
You get no argument from me on that one?
When I look at, I think Hampton didn't impress me a great deal. They are located here in Jacksonville and Lakeland. I mean, they're right around the corner. But when I look at what they, while they show, you know, an increase year over year, when I read through what their plans were, I felt that they made a stab, and I, and I guess it's fair that they made a stab at putting together a business plan, not having really reviewed what we do here and what we are expecting. So with that said, I think I could probably leave Hampton on. I want to, I want to hear from Brown, even though they're not, when I look at what they have here as a number of courses, and the number of operations that they have for food and beverage, I don't know. I still, I want to hear from them. Kemper Sports, when I originally looked through their booklet, I was unimpressed with their booklet. It seemed to me like they just threw some numbers together. However, they are a significant player. And it could be that my initial reaction to them was misplaced. Trune, and I don't know why I'm taking the lead on talking, but I did anyway. Trune, big player. It would seem to me like they would have something to offer. However, again, when I look at the path, I see no path to, to a break-even point. Indigo, unfortunately, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll listen to them because it's, you know, they're our partners currently. But I'll tell you flat out, I was very disappointed that basically, in my estimation, from what I saw from their proposal, was we are doing the best that we can do currently, and we're not expecting to get any better on the financials. And I just thought that was quite disturbing. So, having said that, I, you know, like I said, I think I could, for the sake of trying to narrow it down to some key players, I could drop out Hampton and Cypress.
If you want me to go next, I will, but.
Okay.
I, I said from the, from the start, I'd like to talk to all of them. And I could go either way. It's, it's, you know, I'm going with what the board wants, but I, I too, I think we grandfathered Indigo in, so they're going to be in the final. I think, didn't that what we did?
That's what we did, yeah.
Yeah. So, I agree. It's funny, Craig, and you and I have not talked, but I, the two companies that I weren't impressed with was Cypress and Hampton. And I still would like to talk, if the board wants, I could talk to all of them. But if I would, I would go along with, if the majority want to cut a couple of them, it would be, I got Mark here Hampton and Cypress Golf, so. So, that's what I have. And I, I don't think I have to go any further. I don't want to, because I want to talk to them. I want to see, because the way something like, with the way these figures are, just, I don't know how motivated some are. And we don't know that until we find out what, what the range of the wages are, and a range of different things that I have that I think is important. But, and I've told, a couple of employees have said something to me, and I said that in almost every one of these proposals, I don't think they're going to move many people, or at least when they start. At least that's my impression.
Yeah, my, my impression reading through is the indications are they want to at least keep everybody on a trial basis.
Yeah. And I, maybe, maybe Ryan would know, who, this is just a question. When you, when you come in, do you keep everybody, or do you, and then they're on a probation? Because I read that in a couple of the proposals, but it's not, I just wanted some of the employees to know that I think if they want to stay, they're giving them a chance. And I don't know if that's what Indigo does, but.
And does Indigo allow?
There is, there are some issues there. Obviously, the employees are the management company's employees.
Right.
So once you bring them on board, it is much harder to then eliminate the position, especially with the HR standards of, most of the companies are very big and have huge HR standards. So you end up with performance counseling, and it could take, you know, six months unless there's ultimately behavior issues. It's easier to eliminate positions to begin with and rehire. Obviously, when we take over a new club, we'll even reach out to the old club for, for the old management company, what their, you know, what they would recommend. We reach out to some of the board members a lot of times, and then go from there. It's also what we can bring into the facility.
Great, okay.
So if I had a superintendent that, at a club we lost, that I knew that can handle the job, maybe I would recommend that and not take a chance on the person that was here. So I mean, it's, there is no definite answers.
Okay.
However, if you do bring them on, it is much harder to get rid of them. So.
Okay, great, okay.
Hopefully, I cleared up a few questions.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks a lot. And I would say, in, in a lot of our cases, that I personally would think if they'd be, if I was running it, I'd keep, I'd keep some of the employees because they're good employees. But I guess that's not up to us. That's, that's up to them. But I just, I did mark here, I got two check marks, but I go along with the board, but my least two favorites are Cypress and Hampton Golf, and that's all I got.
Ray, Joe, want to opine?
Let Joe go.
Ray says let Joe go.
I guess I'd like to understand, and you won't get this without talking to the principals, but I'd like to understand where the numbers come from. There's some numbers on here that make sense based on what Indigo reports. There's other numbers that don't.
Well, Joe, I guess you just asked Tanya, because Omar's not here to help us, so.
More than likely, when the numbers are significantly different, that means a change in business plan. So that could be, let's say, for instance, on the golf course, could be more tee times, you know, less shotguns. I'm just giving examples. Now, I don't know, I don't want to speak for other companies, but, but when there's a significant change in number, that means a significant probably change in business plan, whether it's on the restaurant side or the golf course side. If that makes sense.
On the labor side, if you, if you read through the reports, Brown was estimating much higher salaries than Kemper and Trune, for instance. So the, the wage issue is part of the labor cost difference.
Wage issue is part of that, too, yes.
Did you have any strong contenders, or any that you felt we could eliminate at this point, rather than bringing them in?
You want me to go?
Go ahead, Ray. You're always got a good opinion on things. You always have a good opinion on things. A strong opinion on things. How's that?
Strong opinion?
Okay. After reviewing them all, I thought they were all very comparable as far as golf course, as far as the golf course goes, as far as how they would treat the golf course and take care of the golf course. So I saw no advantage whatsoever of switching based on the golf course. To me, what it all boils down to is the restaurant, which is where financially we're getting hammered. The one number that I would love to see, and I sent Tanya an email on this the other day, is I would love to see apples-for-apples percentages of payroll and benefits as a number of, what was it? I can't remember now what I even sent you.
Percentage of sales, payroll.
Percentage of payroll, percentage of other, all other expenses, and a percentage of, there was three categories that I need to pers-
No, we already said that. Cost of goods. And expenses.
Yeah. There's three percentages that I need to see. All these numbers here, I need to know what a company thinks they should be at percentage-wise, and how they're going to get us to that number. That, to me, is what, what would make the difference in how I was going to choose a company. I believe it takes three or four years to get to where we have to get to. I think we kid ourselves, if anybody says, in the restaurant, I'm speaking of now, if anybody thinks we're going to make money in their restaurant in the next two years, you just kid yourself. It's at least three, four, maybe even five years, unless you just close it down. So those, there's-
So, those, there's three percentages that I think are critically important. And that's how I would go, I mean, I would go with that as my basis. And then, you know, you can challenge companies and say, "Well, Cypress, how the hell did you get $796,000 worth of payroll and benefits?" Because they're all putting numbers down, but it's really the percentages that count. If labor should be 50% in the restaurant, which I believe is probably an accurate number, and we're at 68 or 67 now, the question is how, who's gonna get us down from 67 to 50? And who's gonna do it? That's not gonna make us, you know, with the less pains, I guess. And it's the same thing, if all other operating expenses are 10% or 12%, which I believe they are, who's gonna get us to that point? And I wish I could remember the other one, it's terrible. It wasn't cost of goods sold, it was... Bear with me.
Oh, I'll have it here. Percentage of cost of goods sold, percentage of total labor, and percentage of all other expenses.
Right.
In relation to F and B.
My research tells me that it's 50% labor, 10% to 12% expenses, and the cost of goods sold is around 36. And if you add it up, it comes to a little over 100%, 102%, 103%, which means we would lose 2% or 3% in the restaurant. And I gotta tell you, if we would only lose 2% or 3% in the restaurant, we'd all be really happy. Because right now, we're getting hammered. But who's gonna get us there? That's what I wanna know. And when you look at the numbers again, I don't, they're not apples-for-apples. Everybody's putting numbers down on how they see it, but we need to get it all so they're reporting the same. For example, where is the general manager's salary? Is it in the golf operation? Is it in the food and beverage operation? Is it in both? We don't know how these companies did this. And I think we gotta find out. But I also think we gotta go with percentages, and that's how I would approach it. They're all good companies, otherwise they wouldn't be in business. I mean, I can rank them. But, I mean, there's one company that's more international than they are here, you know, in the States. And their facilities, so far, their facilities are in Illinois. I don't know how you wanna do business with somebody whose corporate office is in Illinois. But there's things like that we can talk about later. Bottom line is, I would love to see the percentages. And this is important enough that I would talk to all six companies. This is a big-time decision. So, I agree with Mike on that. Let's talk to them all.
Okay, well, let me give my opinion, because I came down exactly where Craig was. I could easily eliminate Cypress and Hampton. I liked that the CEO of Cypress had some experience here. He apparently used to be with Kitson. But I wasn't impressed with their overall plan, and I don't think they can get us where they, where we need to be based on what I'm seeing in the plan. And I'd rather not waste their time or my time to hear more about what they can or can't do for us. And I feel the same way about Hampton. Trune and Kemper are a couple of the giants in the industry. They have a lot of experience that could come into play beneficially for us, even though they're very large. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. I think the fact that they're even interested in us is an impressive thing. I kind of agree with what Craig said. I was a little surprised by Antares, or Indigo, I guess it is now. I'm still confused on that one. Not only not showing that they weren't going to be able to make major improvements, but that they were willing to reduce their fee but wanted a bonus as long as they weren't losing more than $200,000. I'm like, wow. And that's $200,000, not counting the leases, which I'm a little confused on. And if Omar was here, I'd ask him to explain, because the new report we got today put the leases in. But I'm showing the equipment lease is 172, and the carts is 140. And that, to me, adds up to 312. And he's only got 246 in the new pro forma that we got. So, I'm not sure what the difference there is.
I agree. I don't know.
So, anyway, clearly...
Changing, it just goes across the board.
No, but I understand. What's 246 is lower than what the budget shows, 172 for the maintenance equipment and 140 for the carts. So, that's 312, not 246. So, we've got a big deficit to make up, no matter who we go with. So, it looks to me like, even if we change management companies, we're gonna be behind the eight ball, but ideally improving. So, you know, I would be more inclined to call back Trune and Kemper and Indigo. And Brown was interesting. I can't say that I was thrilled with what Brown had to say, but their numbers sure looked impressive. So, I would be willing to hear them out and make a decision between those four, and eliminate the other two would be my call-out, which kind of parallels what Craig was saying.
You know, Cypress was the only company that said they would evaluate every aspect of the business within the first 30 to 90 days.
I'm not sure I agree with that. I was seeing that in every, everyone was saying that that's the first thing they do.
Yeah? I picked it up in one moment.
Yeah, I did, too.
With the possible exception of Indigo, who is already very familiar with the operation. Can you clarify, did it go from Billy Casper to Antares to Indigo?
Antares is our parent company name. Our brand name is Indigo Golf.
Okay. Because the report came through as Antares, the proposal.
We hadn't changed the name yet.
Okay. So, Indigo is really new.
Very new.
Yes.
Okay.
The company was very new. The RPs were being brought in for that.
Okay.
This was the last RP to introduce Billy Casper Golf.
For Antares.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, because I was getting confused. I like Indigo better. It's much easier to remember.
I agree.
Okay, so, I guess we have a discussion as to whether we invite back four or six. I'm not seeing a consensus. Should we take a vote?
One more time, this is kind of a big decision. What's the difference? What do we got to lose by talking to six?
Several hours, and...
30% of your budget, of our budget.
I understand. But I think that we're wasting our time with at least two of these, because I don't think they're gonna go anywhere. And I'm all for getting all the information we want. I just don't wanna waste our time or their time when I don't see they have any real possibility of offering anything for us.
And which two are you recommending that we dump?
Cypress and Hampton, which are the same two that Craig recommended we dump. And the two weakest on Mike's list. Joe, how about you? What's your feeling on how many to invite back for further discussion?
If I were to talk to four of them, it would probably be, at this point, Indigo, Brown, Kemper, and Trune.
Okay. So, eliminating the same two that Craig and I discussed and that Mike would be okay with. So, unless you can be more persuasive, I think we're gonna narrow it down to four, Ray. I'm sensing a consensus on four. Craig gonna come back in?
If we ask for the little percentages, probably... I want one of those headsets. How long would it take to get the percentages back from each one of these companies, do you think, that Ray was looking for?
Not long. I mean, we can go ahead and put that request out for all six, if that's something, or be that direction of the board. I mean, I don't know. We could actually calculate that in-house, too, for you.
I don't believe the numbers on this paper are right. I mean, look at our numbers.
I know. The numbers in the F and B side are...
They're ridiculous. That's why I look at percentages. But I need it to be apples-to-apples to look at it.
We could request a date to have the information back.
I kinda half-agree, and I respect Ray's opinion on this. But all we're trying to do is to decide, because I want them, I want whoever it is, whether it's four or six, in here and us talking to them. I mean, it's important that we can talk to them and ask them, "What's your percentage right then?" I mean, if you need that ahead before we do four or six, that's fine. But I just don't wanna drag this out even longer than what it is.
No, and I don't want it to, either. I just was looking...
If we needed that kind of stuff, we should've got it before. I mean, in my mind, and I probably would've asked you for it if that would... Because the percentage of that is, I know our payroll is too high. I mean, anybody can look at that, whether it's one we have now or some of them that they have on there, to make any kind of money. But it's, and I read, didn't I read in there, Ray, that a restaurant was, one of them recommended 38%?
What, labor?
Labor, in the restaurant. But again, I'm just...
50% of the labor to the revenues of the restaurant. Labor to the revenues of the restaurant should be around 50%. I believe that's the number.
Okay, I thought it was, I read 30, or 38 or something from a couple of them in there.
Trune says 45 is their norm on labor.
But I just think it's, you know, it's, I would talk to six or I'd talk to four. I mean, I don't care, but I just, I need to get to the stage where we can put them in front of us and talk to them and ask questions. And I wanna know payroll for the management. I wanna know payroll for, you know, there's a lot of things. It's so hard to even try to pick from what we got here, other than projections. And some of the projections aren't what I like at all. But until I talk to them, and that's only my opinion. I'll go along with anybody. But I just don't think we should delay this part of what we're doing to find out some more information. That's...
Yeah, I think that the key percentages are in the reports of the key people, in my mind. I haven't looked at all of them yet, but I'm pretty sure. I know they're in Trune, because I just read them.
Okay.
And I think Kemper had them in there, too.
They're not apples-for-apples.
What do you mean, apples-for-apples? They're the standard percentages that they see for food and beverage.
Where are they putting the labor? Where's he going? Where's the general manager's salary going? How's it split? Are they all doing it the same way? You don't know?
We will, we will, when we ask them to give us their top management payroll in the amount, or close to it. And who we decide the top payroll is. I don't care how they break it up in their books.
Kemper says...
That don't make any difference.
Yeah, Kemper says labor is 50% is their norm, and would reduce, let's see, where is it here?
One of these, in English, but it is a joke. It happens to be Kemper, because all Kemper did was apply their percentages. You guys accept that? That's all they did here to come up with their numbers. They applied percentages to the revenues. How are they gonna get there? You tell me, how are they gonna get there? They can't.
This page from Kemper says how they're gonna get there.
I'm looking at the numbers.
I know. I'm looking at the reports. The reports give us a lot more information than the numbers.
They're gonna get there in the first year. They're gonna get the 50% of labor in the first year. That's what this says. That's what this says. I didn't make it up, I'm looking at it. Revenue, $950,000. Payroll, $475,000. It's 50%? It's an easy math figure. That's all they did. They took the percentages that we should be at, in their opinion, and said we're gonna be there the first year. How are they gonna get there, the first year?
By reducing labor.
I'm sorry?
By reducing labor.
Which reduces service. So, there's...
Well, it doesn't necessarily reduce service. There are ways to control labor costs without reducing service.
I agree. But their labor number across the board is the lowest out of all the other companies. So, it's a straight 50%, just like you said. All they did was apply their basic percentage.
Right. Well, that's not reality. That's not what's gonna happen. Do you think that's what's gonna happen?
I think it could happen.
The first, you guys are living in a make-believe world.
I'm not living in a make-believe world. I'm living in a world where I used to control labor. You may have to ask more from...
Get rid of 200. What is the difference in the labor between Kemper and what we have now? How are you gonna, where's that couple hundred thousand?
Managing...
Where's that, where are you gonna cut it?
The hours that staff works.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna be cutting hours and asking more from your management.
To the 200, a quarter of a million dollars?
Well, maybe not the first year, Ray, but they're gonna start to cut.
The number's not worth what the paper's put on. That's my whole point. That's all I'm trying to point.
I just don't know why we always have...
Those are discussions that we can have when they get here, because they can answer them or they can't.
Guys, who would you want? I vote for six. You guys want four, that's fine.
Well, to create a formality, I would recommend that we eliminate Hampton and Cypress and invite the other four back for a meeting. I have one vote against and one vote for.
I'll go along with it, four.
I would say that originally, so four.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So, we're gonna invite back the other four. Now, the question is, when? I think we need to have a special meeting. And the sooner the better, based on the schedule that we've got. We'll get to the comments in a minute.
Would the board wanna have the special meeting prior to the next regular meeting, which would be December 11th?
No. I can't be here.
When can you be here, Ray? When, what dates work for you? You've got the surgery coming up.
First two weeks of December, I'm out.
So, we need to try to schedule something before the end of the month, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and I have a surgery December 2nd, I think.
November 30th is a Monday. That would be my recommendation, or December 1st is a Tuesday.
Tuesdays are up for me.
I'm going in Tuesday, November... well, no, I'm sorry. No, December 2nd.
That's a Wednesday.
Well, then it's December 1st.
So December 1st is... no, Mr. Branson?
Tuesdays aren't an option for me.
Okay. November 26th is Thanksgiving, so is Monday... what about Monday, November 30th, or it'd have to be December 14th, which would be a Monday?
Yeah, look, how are you... would you be recovered by the 14th?
Yeah, I worked it out so I could be at the meeting and be looking.
Oh.
Oh, you did, okay.
That's how I did my surgery, so... yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, I would just be guessing, but I know a few days before my surgery, I got doctors and COVID tests and scheduled already, and I don't have my calendar with me, but Monday the 14th would be better for me, I know.
14th work for...
What about the 11th? If we're having a board meeting anyway.
Well, to be able to have discussions with these groups, you're gonna have...
Be one one day anyway.
What about Thursday, December 10th? The benefit of a workshop meeting is it is strictly only for presentations, so we won't have any other agenda items at that point. So what about Thursday, December 10th?
I can't hear.
Okay.
I mean, will it be another code?
Or Monday, November 30th, but you said that wouldn't work for you on a Monday?
I can maybe change...
That's the soonest.
I think that with them having surgeries on those dates, you're gonna have pre-op and all that. I don't think that's gonna work for them.
Okay.
I'll go to the 14th.
14th?
We're gonna try to do four in one day?
Yes.
I would... it'd just be an all-day event.
Yeah, it'd be an all-day event, because if you figure hour and a half to two hours each one, you're looking at an eight-hour day.
Unless you wanted to break it up into two days.
Two on Thursday and two on Friday.
You can do that way, too.
I'm sorry, were you talking the 10th and 11th, Thursday and Friday?
10th won't work, so...
Right.
Two or three in one, however you do it, but you can take advantage of your Friday agenda being small, which you probably will.
We could schedule a special meeting in the afternoon on December 11th and have... that's up to the board, but all four...
One or two of them part of the Friday meeting. It's a normal nine o'clock hour, or immediately after, whatever you choose to do. Don't come back in the afternoon. You shouldn't have to.
Well, we need to schedule them as well, so, I mean, if we're talking about doing two on Friday, then I would say we would schedule them at 12 and 2, or 1 and 3, or something like that. I don't know. So, so you wanna try to do two on Friday and two on Monday?
Additionally, we have the recreation master plan to discuss. I mean, we could postpone that if you wanted to until January.
I would go along with postponing that.
Absolutely. I still, as I've told you, I've got... there's a lot of things about that master plan until we have numbers, until we know grants. I can't give you anything that I want done on there or what even the give you a priority list.
Okay.
We don't have the money.
So does two on Friday and two on Monday work?
Yes.
I thought you were talking Friday, the 11th?
Friday, the 11th, so in the afternoon, we'd have two of them come in then, and two of them on Monday, the 14th.
And I didn't look at it yet, but I think we probably should do alphabetical order so we don't show any prejudice anywhere. I don't know who, how that would line up, but...
Well, did we talk about doing Indigo last?
No, I was thinking about doing Brown. It'd be... who would it be? Brown would be first aid.
Brown and Kemper.
But I would come before Kay.
Yeah, I would be Brown and Indigo.
So assumedly then Brown and Kemper on Friday afternoon, and Trune and Indigo on Monday?
I just think we should do it alphabetical so that we don't...
That would be alphabetical.
How are we doing it?
Unless we're gonna go by Antares.
Well, Indigo would come before Kemper, too, so...
Yeah, I before Kay. How are we doing this?
We're gonna...
I think we're gonna try to do Brown and Kemper on Friday afternoon of the 11th, and Trune and Indigo on Monday, the 14th.
Indigo, Trune, Trune's next.
Obviously, I would ask the Indigo people not be present.
And that's where it gets complicated. I asked Tanya to try to get us a legal opinion. Theoretically, these are public meetings, and therefore we can ask that the companies not attend each other's presentations, but I'm not sure we can require it.
It's so close to sunshine.
Okay, let's have any public comment on this topic.
Sorry, Bob, that's a little vertical. Bill Norcross, this is a very complex issue. You're dealing with local people who may lose their job or may not. You have formulation that it's really confusing because you don't know if these numbers are really real, you know, when they say they've lost or made so much money, you know? You don't know that. What I suggested is, suggest is, when you get down to two or three contenders, one would be right here, so then now we're down to two more, then the... somebody should take a visit to actually one of their golf courses to find out what is the condition and what are their problems? Are they resolving it? I mean, here we have water problems, tree problems, the whole works, and you have local people here that know what's going on. They know where all the bad spots are, or the skeletons in the closet type of situation. So I would be happy to drive anybody that wants to go to one of these golf courses, except for that one in Illinois. I'm gonna scratch that. I'm not going with that. But anyhow, I think it's, you have knowledgeable people here that can evaluate and assist you in making your decision, and we have... if somebody is coming from, well, Orlando, that's okay, Apollo Beach, but Lakeland is... they know what the seasonal changes are and the problems we have with hurricanes and other things like that, so people in Illinois, absolutely, they wouldn't know anything about that. But I just hope that the, all the conditions of budget, costs, and a visit can be implemented because I really, you have to really see the site to determine if the company that's in, whether it be Trune or Brown or whatever, is really doing a good job. All right, thank you.
Okay.
I agree with you, Bill. I think we ought to recommend that the golf committee be put to use. Send them out to look at some of the courses and have them report back to us with the option of if a board member wants to go, he can go, too. But I agree, we should check out properties before we talk to these people.
That's an excellent idea, and perhaps maybe, I don't know, if you wanted to get a small bus with 10 or 12 people to observe, that would be a good idea, too. But I highly agree the golf committee could handle something like this. Thank you.
So you think we should visit the courses before we talk with anybody? Which means we're gonna put the meetings off a little further?
No, I don't think you have to put... it's got nothing to do with the timing of the meetings. You got between now and December.
Well, except a couple of you are having surgery, so now we're talking between now and the end of November, so two weeks.
I think it's important.
I understand. The question is, can we pull it together? Because I think it's a matter of more than just making a tee time and going to play the golf course. We need to be able to meet with their staff, and we're talking about over Thanksgiving.
I'm not so sure a board member has to go. If we can get four guys from the golf committee, hop in a car, and go to a facility, then right up... excuse me, right up there, could give us a summary on it, that would be good enough for me. I don't know. You guys do not think so?
Well, it certainly crossed my mind that I would like to see at least one of their operations, one of each of their operations, before we make a decision. I don't know that I need to see that until we narrow it down a little further, but...
I think Kemper, Kemper has, what's the one right up the street that's cost a lot of money?
Yes, Kemper has Stream Song, which really is...
Stream Song.
Wow, okay.
And one of them just took over an ex-Indigo course and play our Winter Haven Country Club. I played it, that one before, when it was Billy Casper's course. I mean, it's not too far for even us to go.
Yeah.
But I know I have different opinions than a lot of people, and I've golfed my whole life. I mean, I would look at a lot of things different than somebody else.
Yeah.
I would like to go myself and do it, but I've been to a couple of the places already.
Well, I tend to look at things from an operational standpoint.
Yeah.
Just a quick clarification. Obviously, I have no problem. I think you should go to other properties and do that. However, I would be very budget-conscious of where you go.
You don't think I should go to Stream Song? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, even Winter Haven Country Club, right? It's the same maintenance budget, roughly, for 18 holes.
Yeah.
So the expectations are much higher. The dues are higher. You know, Stream Song...
It's apples and oranges, absolutely. I understand.
Yep.
And that's why I tend to look at operational rather than condition of the course. I would... condition of the course is important, but I don't expect this to be a Stream Song or a Pebble Beach.
And I guess I wanted to thought, or question, just like Indigo, there aren't, Mike, aren't you headquartered in Virginia? I mean, the place. Like Kemper, Kemper is in Chicago or Illinois, but most everybody has regional offices either in Jacksonville or Orlando.
We're out of Western Virginia.
Yeah, okay.
Obviously, we have four regional offices in the state.
But and most of these...
Actually, we have seven offices in the state. We have four that handle this account.
Most of these that I saw all have offices in Orlando or Jacksonville, which, so they'd be close. It's not like, I think Mr. Norcross mentioned, Illinois, that's only their corporate, you know?
And Trune is corporate in Scottsdale. They've got a Florida office, so... Okay, so how would you propose going forward with course visitation?
As a group, I'm not recommending. Okay, I mean, if we had, if we did it as a group, of course, this is off-property, it would have to be advertised as a public meeting. That would be the most efficient way, though. I mean, as a group, unless the board members individually wanted to go themselves or with a friend, there's more coordination in that. I mean, those are the options.
I mean, I think you use the golf committee. I mean, that's what they're here for. If, and if, you know, a golf committee, and if one supervisor wants to go along with them, because I think it can't be more than one, I think then you run into a problem.
Can't be two, correct. It'd have to be one.
Then that's fine. I don't see that as being a problem.
Okay, but you're talking about experiencing four courses in roughly two weeks? Because you want to get, I mean, a visit to each of the operators, correct?
I would think so.
Well, three anyway, because we know ours.
Yeah, so it's three plus you gotta go to.
Because I just played the Indigo course up in Lakeland last week.
I think, I just, I'd say that makes sense. The golf committee and a supervisor.
And, you know, I don't care. Mike, you can be the supervisor if you want to go.
No, I don't care either way, because I planned on...
I don't want to go.
You know, I don't, I'm not gonna judge anything like that on what somebody thinks of another course. I thought about maybe calling, something, you know, but everybody's gonna be, even if we check to references and how they feel like when they called, they're gonna... they wouldn't put them down there if they weren't gonna get a good...
That's right.
A good thing.
I guess from my perspective, what I would suggest, based on what I'm hearing, is if, Tanya, if we could call the operators and arrange a meeting, I would suggest we send a group from the golf committee to play, and while they're playing, I would like to be able to meet with some staff, and I'd go, I'd go along, not as a player, but as to just get their take.
And I would suggest to anybody, I mean, it doesn't have to be golf committee, I'm willing to listen to anybody with an opinion, and then all decide what I think of their opinion. So if you hear somebody would like to go to the place, let them go and let them come talk to me. I'd be willing to do that, because ultimately, I'm gonna make my decision for me, and I'll listen to everybody that wants to talk to me about it.
I don't think they need to go to play golf. They just need to go to tour the facility, ask questions, get the heck out. That's all they need.
Take a ride through the course.
We're gonna assume the golf course is in good shape.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, they can see that from...
I mean, if they want to play, that's fine, but I don't think we have to tell them to play the course. I just think it's important. I think, you know, I just, sometimes I think we're rushing into something that we're gonna end up regretting. I'd rather take my time and do it right.
Well, I don't disagree with that at all. I just know that when this was brought back to the board, we put together very aggressive schedules to make a decision, and if you want to slow the train down, I'm all for that.
Maybe we should. I don't want, this is, I'm telling you, it's what, 35% of our budget, yearly budget?
I'm okay with slowing it down, especially trying to cram this all in at the holiday time. We're not only is it our time, but the people that we're trying to get in here is time at a time when the COVID's running rampant, so...
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is maybe people need to evaluate their numbers based on what's the reality of the world today.
My focus would be that I kind of like to have whoever it is be somewhat in place so that they can partake in the budget process, so that when we come into next year's fiscal year, we're at where we're at, whatever that decision was.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure I understood what you were trying to get at there, Craig.
That we can slow the train down, but I would still, I want to keep going forward so that we have a decision made, so that when it comes time for next year's budget, that we have that player involved, so that when we hit fiscal year '21, '22, that they're on board.
Yeah, because here's the other, here's the other thing we have to deal with. If we, let's say we meet on the 11th and the 14th, I think is what we picked out, well, we're gonna need a public meeting on conversation on what we're gonna do, right? We're not gonna decide, I don't think, that Monday afternoon.
No, I don't think we'll make a decision... No, I don't think we'll make a decision that Monday afternoon.
So, we have, we're going to need another meeting to even have a conversation, and quite frankly, I don't see how you get that in before the end of the year.
We don't. We don't.
I agree. And, and the issue that we have, and I think still works with what Craig was saying, is that we have to give, if we decided to change, we would have to give Indigo six months' notice. So, we're, we're looking at a delay, but if we can make a decision by March, we can phase out Indigo through the rest of this fiscal year, and start the new fiscal year with a new operator, and have them be a part of the budget process. So, that gives us a couple of extra months to work with.
I'm not sure you want the new guy in here with the season coming. That timing doesn't sound good to me. I mean, it would make more sense to me to do it at the end of June and make it effective in January, as opposed to having the unknown entity, if you will, here when the snowbirds all hit and everything changes. Just an opinion.
I'm not sure I understood what you were trying to get at there, Joe.
The busiest time of the year for us, I would think, Mike, you can talk to this, but it would be in the first quarter of the calendar year. It's a new fiscal year with all the snowbirds arriving.
Right.
All the activities to go with that. I didn't want to heap that on a new company.
It's going to be that way from now on.
I'm not sure why you would.
The best possible scenario, if we do make a change, it would be in July, August.
Which is why we were trying to get a schedule that said we would make a decision by January.
Yeah.
And, and now we're saying we're going to slow the train down.
Yeah, June and September might be tougher for the company coming in, if there is one. But, again, this is a board, I keep stretching, of five people, and three make the decision, so I'm willing to go along with the majority of the board. I just don't, we just do so much bickering about something that's pretty easy to.
Well, this, this isn't easy, and I don't think we're bickering. I think we're trying to figure out.
We're not. I guarantee you we're bickering, not you.
We're, we're trying to figure out how the changes in philosophy is how we're going to approach this, are changing the schedule for what we want to accomplish. Because we, we were pushing this through quickly, so that if we were going to make a change, it would take place in the summer when we're slower.
Yeah, that's true.
And now we're saying, if we're going to slow the train down, that's not going to happen. So, that's, that's what we need to figure out, is, you know, what are we doing to our schedule here?
I think we need to keep pursuing what we're doing, but we can't do it hastily and miss what we're really trying to accomplish. If it means that we're not going to make, the plan that we put together was very aggressive, and for this type of a decision, it probably was way too soon, especially with holidays, et cetera, going on. But, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to get a plan and a, a decision made by sometime in February, if it even takes us quite that long. I, I don't see why we can't get that done by February to where, you know, it's.
I agree. So, why don't we get it said and do it? I mean, we just got two days for two things, which I thought might be, was a little aggressive. But then, we get the two dates, and poor Tanya got two dates, and it took, took a lot of work to get there, and now we're going to change it again. I mean, I don't care.
Well, I don't know that we're changing the 11th and 14th. We're still going to get those people in here. But we're going to take a while to make that next decision.
And I agree, but I, I, do you guys know what I'm saying? It just seems like we decide something that has changed.
Well, we're discussing, we're discussing things. I mean, that's what we're doing, is talking about.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
I mean.
And talk is important at this stage.
I don't think this, I think it's important.
I agree.
Nobody disagrees with you, Ray. So, okay.
I still think, you know, okay, we're going to be, we can meet right after the first of the year, after we've had time to digest what we learned on the 11th and the 14th. And that's right after the beginning of the year, then we need to be sitting down saying, okay, this is where we're going. And we've got this, we've got enough data to make the decision that we want to make. And then, so there'd be no reason, if, if need be, that we give the six-month notice. It would go into effect, let's say, the first of February, or the middle of February, whatever the case may be, and that's six months from there. That does provide that group, if it's a new group, to get themselves in line for what we hope to be a normal, such, normal season.
So, you're still advocating that we meet the 11th and 14th?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. See, I was under the impression we were going to.
No.
Take that away. Okay, I apologize.
I thought that was a gift, that was in.
You're assuming that they, they can handle?
Well, yeah, you're assuming that they can come, yeah.
So, let, let me reach out to the three companies, and then, of course, with Indigo, you have the date as the 14th, and make sure that they can actually be here for that day.
Right.
So, it's my understanding we're going to advertise a special meeting for the afternoon of December 11th with Brown and Kemper, if they can be here, with a two-hour limitation on presentations, or maybe hour and a half? I mean, that, I mean, to, just to give them a ballpark of what we're.
Yeah, I would say the ballpark is an hour and a half, but we scheduled two, just in case there's an over. I would hate to have an overlap.
All right, and then we also scheduled a special meeting for Monday, December 14th, at 9:00 AM?
That would be my preference, if that works.
Preference, okay.
And I don't know, it's up to you guys, but if somebody can't, could you maybe reach out to one of the other ones?
Yes, absolutely.
Mix or match, but.
Yeah, I'll, we'll reach out to all of them first and see if those, those dates work, and we'll go from there.
And who's going to, who can approach, like, the golf committee, and I guess you talked about wanting to go for operational things, but I, I don't think it hurts to get some opinions from the people that, you know, do a lot of golf, of what their thoughts are.
I think for a sport.
So, I, I, I think they need to reach out for that to, I think Bob, what, Bob, Bob Butz.
The next golf committee meeting, would it be Tuesday, December 1st, or Tuesday, December 8th?
Don't wait for it.
I'm sorry?
Don't wait for that date. Call Bob and just say, hey, we got some guys that would be willing to go. I don't think it needs to be dragged out. I don't, it doesn't need to, I don't think the golf committee needs to meet just in order to say that.
No, but the question would be, what do we want the golf committee to do?
They could just go look at the golf course. I mean, they don't have to play a round of golf.
They don't have to play. If they want to play, so be it, but I think you just need to go look at the facility, see what they think of it, talk to people, and.
Because I really intend to go, you know, because I could talk, I was at Eagle, Mike, Eagle something, Eagle Brook, Eagle Brook in Lakeland just last week, and it looks just like our course. Our course, and there is, they look a lot like, I mean, not the way they are, but how they're taken care of and stuff like that.
I would recommend that the committee also visit another Indigo course as an option.
Yeah.
And I played the one in, like, Camel Tower, no, Lake Wales, or wherever it is up there, the country club.
Country club of Winter Haven?
Yeah, the Winter Haven, Country Club of Winter Haven.
I would tell them not to go to country clubs.
Sir?
They should go to public facilities, not country clubs.
Yeah, but it's like a public course.
I'm just saying that they weren't.
It needs to be public, not private, yes.
Yeah, I would suggest asking the operator what course in our area is most like ours, and, and see if we can arrange meetings.
Did, can I ask, did any of these companies ask for a copy of everybody's books? Did anybody else? I just assumed that Indigo got a copy of all the books, but did anybody else ask for them?
I'd have to ask Omar.
I know it's public record, so.
We, it is public, we scanned them all in case. Do you know of any companies that might have requested on the PDF versions? Yeah, Omar would have talked to them. I'm sorry, I don't have that answer.
Can I, am I right in assuming that Indigo got a copy of each one of these?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's just, and I don't make any, I just wanted to make sure that that, you know, if any other company has to look at theirs.
It's all public record, yes.
Yes, I knew it's public record, so.
So, this latest sheet that Omar put together, that's on, out there for them to look at?
It's, it's public record.
Do we let them know that that's available, the other companies?
They do. We're a business, we know about it.
Okay.
Are you talking about that spread, yeah, that spreadsheet he just prepared yesterday?
Yeah.
So, what do you?
And I know I have access to Mike or Ren. Are you still not wanting us to talk to any of these companies ourselves?
What was that?
I mean, I can come and talk to Mike about this stuff, right? Or not? Because if I, all I'm asking is, is just.
Are you, are you asking to do specific questions to, by yourself, to specific companies?
Yes, or to go to Mike, and ask Mike a specific question.
Why? Why would you do that without?
I wouldn't think it'd be appropriate.
I, I don't know that I.
I just want to know.
I think the direction of the board is to have the companies come in first and try to direct the questions at that point. I'd like to speak to David about that. If you're asking by yourself to ask questions to specific companies, I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay, and I, I shouldn't really go talk to them.
I'm not saying that it's.
Specific things.
I mean, Mike, if, you know, it really needs to be kind of in a public setting, but I'm not saying it's wrong or right. I'm sorry.
Well, I just meant me personally, and I, you know, and I know when that one company wanted to talk to me, I talked to you about it, but I didn't know if I got called again, if I should just say, no, we can't. Because one of them, I did a call too.
Because, Mike, can we, can we discuss this? I mean, let me, let me talk with our attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be really surprised if any of them would call us out of school.
I, I don't.
So, I shouldn't talk to Mike about anything about.
You can talk to him about our operations, but I wouldn't talk to him about comparing what we do to what they do.
Okay.
Because, I mean, until we hear from the other three companies, we, you know, you want to hear what their business plan is, what their, what their thought process on percentages and all that. I mean, that's, that's something that we need to hear from the other companies directly. But in a group setting is the most appropriate setting for that.
Well, I agree. I just want to make sure, if Ray gets a call, or like I did one time already, to just say, we don't want, we don't want to talk to you personally. We want to wait till we talk to you at the meeting. Right? That's what you'd like?
That would be the most appropriate, yes, sir.
Because I'm telling you, if I was one of the other companies, and I was wanting to get us, I'd be calling every one of these supervisors and saying, I want to talk to you. So, that's.
Yeah, that would really surprise me.
By themselves.
I, I'm just saying, I would really surprise me that if any of them would do that.
I feel that you should share this with all the other bidders. For the simple reason that if it was provided to them, it should be provided. And I, and just the fact that it's out there on public record, I, you could maybe tell them it's on public, as far as I'm concerned, that if we shared this information with them, because they're here at this meeting, that ought to be shared with everybody. If we, that's my opinion.
And that's kind of what I was getting at. I mean, I don't know how much we reached out to these companies as, you know, to try to help them as much as we try to.
I'm not reaching out.
Or has been shared with anybody else.
Okay.
So, is there any objection? You would like staff to send out an email with that spreadsheet to all other five, or just to the, to the ones that we've asked to come back?
For the sake of, it's, I would send it to all six, even though they're not going to get invited.
All six, okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't isolate them yet. I just think it's, if they, if this information was given here at this meeting, then I think it's only appropriate that all of them have it.
When are you going to call the other two companies? I assume we're going to call them, right?
Yes, we're going to call them. I'm going to let them know that, where the sta, what the status is at this point. We've only asked these companies to come back.
Pretending to like.
All right, maybe they don't need it, I guess.
Yeah. I don't think they need it.
Yeah.
If you're going to call them and tell them they're out.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's what I was going to say, just the four would make sense.
Yeah, or actually just the three, because Indigo already has it.
Only three, because one's out there.
But I could still send it in electronic form, so.
But I would like to see what the percentages I requested before the meetings, if possible. And I also like to ask questions. How are we going to run these meetings? Mr. President?
Mr. President? I think we ask them to make a brief presentation and open it up to questions. And if we have, you know, I would say that if there are any specific questions that we want to be sure they're prepared for, that we could get them to Tanya in advance so that she can get them to the, to the people.
Is that what we want to do? I mean, I'm asking. So, if we have specific questions, we give them to you, you'll let the rest of us know that these questions are being asked?
Or we want answers, right?
Yeah, these are the questions that we want answers to, so that they're not totally caught off guard.
If you did any, I don't know if you're going to get it, but if any of us did.
If I get a question from a supervisor, are you asking, if the rest of you want to see it, what I would do then is present it to you as part of the board meeting agenda packets, so that all of you can see the same question at the same time, then we'll be talked about at a public meeting.
That'd be okay, because we see it a week before the meeting, right?
Right.
Yes. If you're okay with that?
Yeah.
So, try to get your questions to me, so we'll see what's the date on that.
All right, so we're going to have.
December 4th would be the, December 4th is when the agenda packets go out for December 11th.
So, we get them to you before that?
Right.
In the special meeting, we don't necessarily have to do a week prior. I mean, we could do maybe, you know, four or five days, but I would prefer it be a week.
Yeah, and well, that way you can get it into the board packets for the 11th.
And then, then we can pass it along to the companies.
Yeah.
So, we're going to have opening remarks, our, then we're going to ask a bunch of questions, and how are we handling the public?
Well, it's a public meeting, so we will have public comment after, after we've grilled them, we'll open it up to the public.
Is it allowed to ask to companies?
Yeah.
I'm not sure two hours may be enough.
Did you, I'm sorry, do you say the public is allowed to talk to the companies?
It's a public meeting. We have public comment at every meeting, right? They, they may or may not have to be answered, but the public has a right to speak.
Is that right?
Public has a right to speak, but, I mean, there's no requirement that the companies answer directly that day on those questions at all.
No, no, well, it shouldn't be questions, it's comments.
It can be comments.
No questions.
Well.
They're not even supposed to ask questions now.
They're not?
It's public comment. No, it's.
Well, it's public comment, but.
It's comment, it's not question and answer.
Well, it's not question and answer. That's the point. It is public comment. They may ask all the questions they want, and we can choose or not to provide an answer at that time, or provide an answer at a later date, but it's public comment. It's not requiring a definite response.
That's right. Sad but true.
Well, it's ridiculous.
No, it's not ridiculous.
Sure it is.
Some questions don't have an easy answer.
I, you know, it's the rule, that's fine, it's a stupid rule. That's all, that's my opinion. You forget, we're, we're supposed to be working for these people.
You're absolutely correct, but we don't always have an answer for every question that they raise.
We don't work for one person.
No, what I'm, what I was saying was, it's unbelievable, we don't, they're not supposed to ask questions.
I'm, I'm saying they can ask all the questions they want, they may not get an answer that day.
Wow. And what about the questions we ask? Do we get answers that day for all of them?
If they can provide them.
They didn't come with the answers, and they didn't really care to be part of our group.
Well, if they can't answer the questions that we give them in advance, that's a real problem.
Yeah.
But if we ask them questions at the meeting and they can't answer, that may just be that, the question we asked doesn't have an easy answer that they can give. You know, it's, if you've watched any of the Washington nonsense that goes on, there's a lot of times I have to get back to you on that.
Do we want to ask them to give us numbers, different numbers than they gave us, or we just take the numbers as they are?
Well, if there are questions that you have on their numbers, that would be a good question to get to them in advance. I don't think we ask them for different numbers. They've put together their proposal based on their best estimates of where they see things. I think every one of them is going to come in, if we were to select any one of them, they would come in and do a new analysis based on deeper knowledge of being here for three months, and they may have different numbers at that point. You know, it's, it's like the argument of, you have a battle plan, and it's good until the first engagement, and, and then you adjust. And that, that's why operationally, it's important to know who you're dealing with from an operational philosophy, more so, I think, than numbers. Numbers are important, but how they deal with, when those numbers don't work, that's where the rubber meets the road. Okay?
And I think maybe you ought to give each one of us a certain amount of time.
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I don't know what the time is, but, you know...
Hour and a half?
No, I meant individually.
If we're saying an hour and a half, we've got five supervisors, if we give one each 15 minutes, that's an hour and 15 minutes. So we could say 10 minutes per supervisor.
There should be structure, a little structure on that.
Oh, per supervisor, okay. You can determine that at the meeting, if you want to.
And I think it's important that if people like me or Ray want to, because there's a couple of questions I want to ask, and let them know ahead of time what I'd like.
Yeah.
And that's important for them to get that early.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and I think we have to take them at their word, or we can grill them a little, but if, if this is what they say, that's what they say.
Okay, you want me to summarize?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to have two special meetings, one special meeting in the afternoon on the 11th with Brown and Kemper, special meeting on the 14th starting at 9:00 a.m. with Indigo and Trune. But I'm going to reach out to all them to make sure that they can make those times, okay? Now, if there's circumstances that they can't, let me work through that internally, and I'll let you know. Questions, if you have questions in advance, please turn those in to me by, why don't we say...
November 30th.
December 3rd afternoon, if you can get that to me, because December 4th is when the packets go out, so... And then any other questions that you have, you can also ask at the meeting, you know, if something comes up where you, you know, have additional questions. But those questions will be part of public record, I'm sorry? Oh, I thought you said something. So, anything else I missed?
Uh, did, did Ray or Craig ask a question about their, Indigo is welcome to come to these meetings, right?
It's a...
If, if, if they are, we need to tell the other ones when they're meeting. Because if Indigo and Trune are last, Indigo and Trune, or Trune ought to be able to know in common if they'd like to the, to the two meetings on, on Friday. I mean, I think that's only fair.
It's a public meeting, they need to be notified that there will be a public meeting on the subject.
And we are going to talk to two of the companies on Friday, the two that don't get to, I mean, I think we should tell them.
They should be here either, but I guess that's... I would think that if they're interested in doing our business, and we ask them not to be here, that they would adhere to that.
I don't care either way, Ray, I just don't think it's, it's fair for, it's not fair for them to come and listen.
The board has done that before. The board has asked in a certain proposal situation that we had with our signage for the other companies not to come. They've asked, they asked that out of respect.
Okay.
The Board of Supervisors did that, they've done it before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um...
Karen, you go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we'd like to see, you know what we've been doing here, and what you do for us, and how we got there? Because when we say things which are challenging, obviously, we will...
I hope you under...
How, how we expect them to do.
I, I hope you understand, we're just trying to be fair, we're just trying to be fair.
Maybe most of these, you know, you know, the last one was that, we were not allowed to see the other company. We were not to come, and it was a brand new course, there was no company.
But it, but it wasn't a public entity?
It was a CDP, so it was a public...
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the question would then be with what we're doing now with Zoom, are we going to be doing these meetings on Zoom as well as public?
I, I was not planning on doing the special meetings for Zoom, no, sir.
That's, I, I would agree that that's fine.
Okay.
You forgot to mention that you have to reach out to the golf committee, Bob Buds.
That was last on my list, so is there a supervisor that is interested in also going to these courses?
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested, there are people there I can meet with, yeah.
Okay.
And if, if he can't go, I'll go. I mean, but I, I don't, I think it's nice if, if Neil can go, and then I, I don't need to, because I plan on going to a couple of them, because I don't know where Brown is.
And maybe if, if we're doing, trying to do this before the end of November, it may be that, it'll be mine, because I've got some issues with, my wife had more stints put in this week, so...
Just call me if you can.
And we may not be able to schedule all four by the end of the month, I mean, and, and that's okay, I mean, we can do that through December.
We're not going to make a final decision until January.
We can do that through December.
It's not the end of the world.
We know what the one is.
Okay.
I just...
Well, but it was, it was discussed that we should see another one of Indigo's courses as well.
Oh.
And we certainly can go see...
That was my recommendation, to go see another one of their courses.
Yeah. And we certainly can go afterwards, because it sounds to me like we might not pick till March, so...
Well, Jane, let me give you the meetings in January.
Yeah, so we've got a little more time.
January 8th and January 22nd.
Well, 22nd is landowners, right?
January 22nd is a landowner.
That doesn't mean we can't do other business.
There's no election, but we can still have a regular meeting in addition to the landowners meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think, just one other thing, I think you and Omar should also have questions that you think need to be answered from their proposals.
I do have a few, I have a few already.
You are experts, you're the ones that's going to have to live with our decision, so you ought to be part of the decision in a way. Yeah, we never did ask, are you, are all these companies compatible with what we need from an operational standpoint?
Until I understand more about the F and B, I think that's what we all are looking at, because the numbers vary so much. I mean, from the golf operations standpoint, the numbers are fairly consistent, with the exception of one company. But I, I really can't answer that until we...
I'm talking, excuse me, not, not the numbers on that sheet, the systems that they provide, their reporting systems, or whatever you want to call it, is this something we can work with? Are we okay with them?
I would, you are, but I, I'm honestly, I'd rather wait until we hear from, you know, all companies before we, we talk through that, so...
Oh, I got you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything more on this grouping? And if not, then let's go to to and from the board, because we put that off until the very end, so what do you have for to and from the board?
I got one thing, believe it or not. I had a conversation with Earl the other day, and we kind of played back and forth on this. There were two areas in the course, on the golf course that I'm particularly worried about. Hole number nine on deer, when you, the cart path, say 50 feet from the green, has just been chewed up, it's just absolutely horrible. And I told, requested from Earl that, that he fix it, so that's one, one issue that I'd like to address. The second issue is the cart path on 17 deer, when you're around that lake on the left, that, the cart path there is not in good shape, plus it cuts itself off, in my opinion, and Earl agreed with me, it cuts itself off too early and needs to be expanded a little bit, so that the grass doesn't, I mean, the grass is having a difficult time surviving there. So he, Earl drew up a plan, which unfortunately I didn't bring with me, so I apologize for that. But he said the cost to do all this would be about $5,000. But there is a change in the layout of the golf course because of the 17. We're actually, he's actually going to expand and move the cart path a little bit around that lake. So he just wanted to make sure, before they went ahead with it, that the board was okay with it. So I'd like to...
We had talked to him, we, we talked to him about it, he said he didn't want to do anything until they made a decision on what you're going to do on 17. He's what, he told, what he told me. They don't want to waste any money ahead of time.
Uh, why not?
And, and is this, if it's $5,000, he can do that again, he can do that himself, can't he?
Yes, sir.
Under our objection, or praise, or whatever we want?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he just wanted the board to know that he's changing.
That's good, but why, okay, I just want to know why he changed his mind, because I asked him the same thing. And, and that's what we got to get used to stop doing, is when we talk to these employees that were united when we're doing it, instead of them picking out their favorite supervisor and getting something.
Well, he's not doing it. What he told Ray was, he wanted to be sure that the board was on board before he did it.
Yeah.
And, and I guess my take would be, I understand the perspective that we need to have a master plan for the golf course, but before we put a lot of money into it, but it's going to be a while before we put a lot of money into it. And I think spending the $5,000 there is probably a good thing, to, to get that ground better used and more, more utilitarian. So, you know, from, from my perspective, I, I think we tell them to go ahead and do it.
Well, I think it's, he, I would, especially with Earl, I'd, I'd go along with what he'd want to do, but again, it's the process we go through.
Sure.
When we find out, I mean, I should...
It's kind of an operational...
About this map he's got, or...
But it is before...
Well, just, just to clarify on that, so this project will come through out of our operating budget. Now, when we did some work on some bunkers, you know, obviously, we got some flag for altering the golf course in a manner, even though it was an operating expense. So when, when this was presented to Earl to look at, he did not want to make that decision, or have that decision be made, even though he can do that, since it's operating expense, without all of the board being aware. So that's why we're coming back to the board, is for the exact reason you want, is because we don't want to make the decision without properly letting all of the supervisors know, instead of just one.
And I appreciate that.
That's, that's why it's come through this way, is for that reason.
Yeah, it should have come through on your report, though, rather than from, from one of our board members.
It very well could have, and that was, it was... This was actually, I mean, it wasn't necessarily brought to me in this situation, it actually went the other direction, and that's why I, I'm, just like you guys, I'd actually have gotten into this on the tail end, otherwise it would have been in my report, but...
Okay. And that's all I want to keep stressing, is just, you know, it's never...
Process. Process is really the hardest part.
Yes. All the ideas, most of the time, are great, it's just how it gets to us.
Okay, so we're all in agreement that he should do that cart path? Yes?
Yeah.
What are we going to do on nine? Because it was, I guess more, whatever, whatever the stuff.
But, I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to be immediate, obviously, doing more right now, if it keeps raining, and we're just defeating the purpose. There's, there's more to it than just...
It's the same one we've been working on.
It's going to be some extra drainage, because if it keeps getting swamped out, it's going to keep happening.
Okay, anybody else to and from the board? The key thing I had already came up, and I wanted to be sure that we were making progress on the sound system, so I'm really happy to, to hear that happening. Do you know what the timing on that is?
No, well, I'll find out next week, early next week, and we'll start that process.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
Yeah, then bring your cross in, see if you can hear that through.
Yeah.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
I could tell he was over there, Ray, he was over there, I could tell, he wasn't here anymore.
He wasn't?
No.
Well, that's what he should have been hearing it.
That's why I picked him out and said that, so...
You'd rather have been out working, wouldn't you?